Hello and welcome to the April 10, 2023, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I'm Cynthia Harris, Acting Chair, and would like to thank everyone who is present in the chambers, as well as those participating remotely via Zoom. We'll move on to roll call, Agenda Item B. Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Commissioner Tate, I'm sorry, Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
And I'm also present. Commissioners Doe and Schindler are absent this evening, but we have four, which is a quorum. So next, Agenda Item C, Reports and Announcements. Miss Sandmeyer, are there any reports or announcements?
Good evening, Acting Chair Harris and Commissioners. There's no reports or announcements, but we do apologize for the delay, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Miss Sandmeyer at this time before we get started? From the commission? Okay. Next, we're going to move on to Agenda Item D, which is Public Comment. Mr. Pruder will be helping us with that this evening. Under Public Comment, the public may address the commission on any subject that is not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, city, or district of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items that are not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here to comment on a specific agenda item, you will have a chance to do so once we get to your agenda item. So, Mr. Pruder, can you let us know if we have anyone for Public Comment?
Good evening and thank you, Acting Chair Harris. At this time, I do not see any participants. I do see one hand raised, actually, and I apologize. As a correction, but as a quick announcement for members of the public, you're welcome to speak on this general public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom, or if you're calling by phone, please press star nine, and we will assist you. Anyone in the council chambers this evening who would like to speak publicly on any item, please feel free at any moment to come to me, the Planning Commission Clerk, with a Public Comment card. At this time, I can begin the Public Comment period if you'd like, by Acting Chair Harris?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have someone by the name of Gita Dev with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta. I'm going to allow you to speak at this time. You do not have to provide your name and address or locality with your public comment, but you are free to do so if you so choose. I will start now, and you'll have three minutes to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harris and Planning Commission. My name is Gita Dev. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, our local chapter. The only reason I wanted to touch base with you was we, the chapter hosted recently a webinar titled Planning for Life Sciences for Bay Area Cities. And in it--
Sorry, I cannot seem to hear you speaking. Can you try again? Just one moment. Can you try to speak again, please? Sorry.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. You may now begin.
Good evening, Chair Harris. This is Gita Dev. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, Loma Prieta Chapter. And the reason I wanted to touch base with the Planning Commission in Menlo Park is because you're one of the cities that has designated a biosciences area adjacent to the Facebook mixed-use area. And we thought that the reason we hosted this webinar was because we found that there was a great deal of confusion and lack of knowledge, really, about the different levels of biotech labs that are being proposed in the Bay Area. And so this is an issue. We would love to have the opportunity to present more information to you about it. We basically wanted to point out that there are four levels of labs. They are all very different from each other. However, a lot of the developers are proposing lab buildings where they have not identified the ultimate client because they will be leasing it to clients. Therefore, they are not able or willing to identify what level of biosafety labs they will be providing. However, it can be really critical for public safety, for community concerns, and therefore, we thought we would organize this webinar that would provide information about biosafety. It's a concern that is being raised at the national levels, at the federal levels, at NIH. And the reason it's being raised is because while in the past, research was generally funded at the higher danger, at the higher risk levels by government sources, in which case they were regulated. However, after COVID, there has been an influx of interest in biotech, and a lot of private money has flowed into it, particularly Silicon Valley is the center for funding. And this can be a concern because privately funded labs are not regulated by the government, and there is no knowledge about the kind of research that is being done in these labs. For these reasons, there is a great deal of concern in the scientific community and at the National NIH about knowing and transparency about BSL Level 3 labs. Level 4 are so dangerous that no labs such are there in California right now. So, any case, the reason I bring it up is simply we would love to provide you with more information. We will send you links to the webinar. We hope that you will take the opportunity to watch some of them, since biotech is coming into Menlo Park as well. Thank you so much. Appreciate your listening.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Dev.
Sorry about that. My apologies for that. We have another public commenter we can have on now.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is someone by the name of Fran Dean. I'm going to allow you to unmute your microphone shortly, but you'll have three minutes as well. And let me do that now. You may now speak. It seems like this speaker is not able to unmute themselves. Fran Dean, your hand is raised, but can you, on your end, unmute your microphone? It should be able to let you speak. I'm having some trouble here, it looks like, with the commenter. I'm happy to wait another moment. Otherwise, the hands are, there are no longer any hands raised, and I see no one in the chambers seeking to speak at this time.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't see the hand coming back up. Okay. Let's close Public Comment and move on to Agenda Item D, which is the Consent Calendar. We have two items on the Consent Calendar. Both are approval of minutes from December 12 of 2022 and January 9 of 2023, Planning Commission meetings. Would anyone on the commission like to pull either of these items? Okay. Seems like no. I would like to direct staff to fix a typo on page 14 of the staff report for the minutes of January 9 under F5. It currently reads Planner Turned, and I think it would be good if we could correct that to Planner Turner. With that, I would take a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. All right, if there are no other comments, let's go ahead and take a vote. And if we could just correct that typo, that would be terrific. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
I'm abstaining, and even though it's not required that Commissioners provide a reason for abstaining on an item, the reason I am abstaining here is because December and January are three and four months, minutes that we're just now seeing in front of us to approve.
Thank you for that explanation. So we have three, oh, and I'm sorry, and I'm a yes. So we have three votes in the affirmative and one abstention with two absences, so the motion passes. Okay, next, we're going to move on to Item F, which is a public hearing. I am going to read that. It's for Architectural Control and a Use Permit submitted by Jamie DeAlessandro for 961 El Camino Real. We're going to consider and adopt a resolution to approve an architectural control for exterior and interior modifications to an existing commercial building to remove a door and window, reconfigure gross floor area to close off an existing recessed area, add a window to the front facade, and create a new entry to the side of the building. And this is in the El Camino Downtown Specific Plan Area zoning district. The gross floor area of the building would not increase as part of the project. Additionally, the proposal includes modifications to the landscaping, including a new deck and trellis. The request also includes a use permit for live entertainment onsite, and onsite consumption of alcohol and outdoor seating for the proposed restaurant use. And we, to determine this action, is categorically exempt under CEQA guidelines for existing facilities. As part of the review, the Planning Commission will need to determine whether the sale of alcohol at this location serves a public convenience or necessity in accordance with the requirements of the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Do we have a presentation from either staff or the applicant on this item?
Good evening, Interim Chair Harris, fellow Commissioners and members of the public. We do have a presentation from the applicant team, but before that, I would like to note that staff does not have any edits to the staff report. As another update, we received two letters of correspondence, one from the property owner and one from the applicant after staff report publication. They have, they have been emailed to the Commissioners in advance of the meeting, and we have copies at the back for members of the audience that are present here in person. The letter from the property owner mentions that he will be retiring clockworks, and the second letter by the applicant discusses the condition of approval on the hours of live entertainment. We do have Lisa and Jamie online from the project applicants team, and Chris and Sam, the project architects, also online, to introduce the project and answer any questions by the Commissioners. With that, I conclude my updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from the applicant, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair Harris and Planning Commissioners. My name is Jamie DeAlessandro, and I have a very brief, less than five-minute presentation I can run through real quickly, as I know you guys have already reviewed a detailed staff report from 15. Lisa, can you share your screen? Wonderful. So as Fatin introd, we are proposing a restaurant at the site, which is known as the Menlo Clockworks Facility, as well as the adjoining office between the clockworks and the Guild Theater. Address is 961 El Camino. On the next slide, I'll just give a very quick background on who we are, the project team. The project team is three local entrepreneurs who have collectively, myself included, lived in Menlo Park for over 50 years. We have shared a common vision for some time now to do something to add to the vibrancy of downtown and do that in the fashion of a high-quality restaurant. We envision a concept, a high-quality concept of food and beverage offerings with limited live entertainment offerings to, to play off of the activity, obviously, directly next door at the Guild Theater. We're also partnering, as Fatin mentioned, with the existing building owner, Alex Deli, who is retiring. He and his wife Sharon retiring after running that business. They own the building, but they have run their business, as many of you know, out of the building for over 40 years. On the next slide, it's just a quick summary of the project team. As I mentioned, three individuals, myself and my two partners, Drew Dunleavy and Hadi Nada, and then Alex Deli, as I mentioned. Also on the line today, if you guys have any technical questions, is our project architect, Chris Wozni, who actually designed the theater next door. And also on the line this evening is our entitlement consultant, Lisa Ring, who we've worked with for years and who's worked with city staff on other projects that I've been involved with. Our interior designer is Craig Tretow with Left Coast Design. He's not here tonight, but this is the team that would help see the project through to fruition and ultimate opening. Next slide, I'll just give a quick overview of the project site. As I mentioned, it's 961 El Camino. It's the southwest corner. El Camino and Menlo, really the southern edge of downtown. And as I mentioned, we're repurposing vacant office space and the clockworks that is winding down. The proposed project on the next slide is a restaurant. And, you know, just, just real quickly, high level, it's not a reconstruction. We're going to be working within essentially the existing building envelope, upgrading it and modernizing it for dining use, for food and beverage use. We'll retain and enhance the exterior character of the building, you know, retain a lot of the architectural elements, add a few new windows for additional visibility, and to, I'd say, enhance the, you know, pedestrian interface, add some new colors and new signs, and of course, do ADA upgrades. We'll also add to the rear of the building to include, you know, hard and lands, hard and soft landscaping, to provide for some exterior seating for not only indoor but outdoor dining options. As mentioned previously, we are requesting to allow for unamplified music and other forms of entertainment with a small interior area on the El Camino frontage. And then lastly, I guess, the current infrastructure would allow for, for us to handle all access and loading through, through the main front door and the ramp along the northern edge of the property. And the next two slides, next three slides, I'll just show you really quickly. There's a site plan, and the following slide is a conceptual floor plan with access through the, essentially, the existing main entrance, where there would be seating in a bar area, restaurant core, or, excuse me, bathroom core, kitchen core, and then access to the outdoors. The next slide shows El Camino and South elevations. And the last slide, just, just putting up some kind of concept and inspiration, there's, excuse me, concept and design inspiration images. The upper left is kind of a conceptual enhancement of the existing facade. We intend to include some signage to brighten up and, and provide, you know, real high visibility and, again, play off the nice marquee signage next door at the Guild. And that is the quick presentation. The project team welcomes any questions, and we're excited to move forward and bring this project to fruition next year.
Terrific. Thank you for that presentation. Does anyone on the commission have any questions, clarifying questions before we take public comment on this item? Okay.
Chair Harris?
Yes?
If I may, I should add, it was mentioned that you guys received the proposed condition of approval for live entertainment, and we're happy to discuss that. It is as, as an exhibit to, we've written it in as an exhibit to the presentation, but I know you guys have a written request.
Got it. Thank you. So at this time, I would like to have us take public comment on this item. Mr. Pruder?
Thank you very much, Acting Chair Harris. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder, anyone virtually with us can press the hand icon, or if they're on phone, dial star nine, and we can have you provide public comment. And again, members of the public here in person today are welcome to provide a comment card, ideally prior, prior to their public speaking for this item. I still see no hands. We can wait a moment if you'd like.
Okay, I think we've provided enough time. So I'd like to close Public Comment and bring, bring this item back to the commission for discussion, questions, and ultimately, a motion. Who would like to start us off with any questions or comments? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Chair Harris. I have a couple, I guess, clarifying of sorts questions in no particular order. What I would like to do is talk one to the, the floor plan and get a little bit more clarity on, and this is through the chair to the applicant.
Go ahead.
Where the live entertainment will be on this floor plan?
Sure. Lisa, can you go to the floor plan slide? Well, she's pulling it up. Commissioner Barnes, it is contemplated, I believe, in, it's a small, small area contemplated in the corner. It's not, it would be the upper right corner, which would be the, what is that? South, that southeast corner of the space. So along the El Camino frontage, closer to the Guild's front door than Santa Cruz.
Okay, so in the upper right-hand corner, there's kind of a crosshatch area?
Yeah, yeah. This is, yeah, this is a conceptual plan, but it would be that upper right corner.
Okay.
And this is conceived as a, I don't even have the dimensions, but it's a, you know, maybe a small stage that can fit a handful of people. It's not, you know, nothing on the scale of directly next door.
Thank you. My next question has to do with the, the circulation. So if I am a customer coming in, could you walk me through where, for instance, I'm going back to the trellis? What's my path of travel back to the trellis? And what are the interior access points to the trellis from inside the floor plan? If you could go back--
Sure. Yeah, so, again, not, not to be repetitive, but conceptual floor plan. And what you see there--
Can you put it back up, please? Excuse me.
Yeah, sure.
Somebody put it back up, please.
Yep. So what you see there would allow access along the north side of the property on a ramped walkway to the back. But what we are working through, and, you know, I'm sure the, what you'll see in the supplemental for construction drawings will be access whereby one can walk in the front door and walk through the restaurant, through it, through an access that could take them into doors into the restroom, or continuing out to the west directly into the backyard. So it'll be two--
I'm sorry to interrupt again. Can you put the next slide on, please?
Sure.
It's easier for us to see the, the site, the conceptual floor plan. Yeah, to Commissioner Barnes' question, can you just kind of, as you're, can you, I don't know if you can use your pointer, but if you can help us a little bit with the circulation? Thanks.
So again, if you, you go in the, the double doors entering into the restaurant, and again, this is, this is a conceptual floor plan, but flow through the, the center of the restaurant, and we intend to have a pathway where one could walk into the little vestibule where you could turn to your right and go into the bathroom core, or continue straightforward, again, to the west and, and exit directly outside. And we're playing around with this or flip-flopping the bathroom and kitchen. We don't have that figured out as of yet, but there will be an access, we believe, to the outdoors from the interior of the restaurant, kind of directly on the line of the front doors to the restaurant. There'll also be one, if you look kind of behind the bar on the north side of the property, the shaded area, that's, that's an ADA ramp that could also take one out to the backyard.
So if I was wanting to go to the trellis, and I was coming off of El Camino Real, is there a path of travel? Is my understanding that to the east side, there's a path of travel directly from El Camino Real, where I would not need to pass through the interior of the restaurant and come straight back to the trellis? Is that being contemplated?
Yeah, so two, two paths of travel from the El Camino to the trellis, either through the center of the restaurant or down the ADA ramp on the north side of the property. That's right.
Got it. And at the risk of being redundant, did the path of travel through the restaurant is, as this floor plan's currently designed, not apparent, but it, you're contemplating--
Correct.
Making that travel through there?
Correct. The, the primary one, obviously, would, would be, well, we have to have an ADA compliant building, and that's achieved via the ramping, but we think we have a solution for a path of travel through the center of the restaurant as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. Point of clarification, as it, this is, I'm sorry, through the chair, to the applicant still.
Please.
Related to the hours for music, for live entertainment, the resolution, the recommended actions from staff caps 11:00 PM as the latest for live entertainment. Should I understand that you are concurring with that, or are you looking for a later time?
The, the latter. So the, the proposed condition of approval that we sent over for live entertainment was asking for limiting the live entertainment hours to match the recommended restaurant hours from 11:00 to 2:00 AM. And we clarified that, you know, because I believe the concern is about disruption to the neighbors, residential neighbors nearby. I'm not, not really sure, but we clarified that, given the, the limited and small nature of any unamplified live entertainment, that, you know, we can satisfy any of our loading or small equipment or similar through the loading area on the building entrance on the El Camino. There's no rear-loading. It can just come in and out the, the front and side. So we are asking, as a condition of approval, that the, the unamplified live entertainment hours match the recommended operating hours of 11:00 to 2:00.
And can I understand that the, the basis for that request, and I apologize for paraphrasing, but as I heard it, was the nature of the entertainment, being that it's unamplified, and in your, the applicant's opinion, nominal in terms of, i- is it a function of being nominal in terms of the potential volume and then the ability to disrupt the neighbors? Or is there another reason as to why you believe it should go beyond 11?
Well, I, I think it's, yeah, nominal in volume, and we're not a rock and roll club, you know, with the state-of-the-art sound system and, you know, a stage that can accommodate a dozen musicians. It's a small stage, actually, on the other side of the lot, so even further than a residential, because it is on the El Camino side. But, yeah, we, we don't envision this being anything that would be remotely disruptive noise-wise, and, you know, the, the loading issue is really a non-issue, because these are, you know, it's someone walking in and out with a keyboard or, you know, a microphone. it's someone walking in and out with a keyboard, or, you know, a microphone, or an acoustic guitar, you know? It's, there's not, it's a non-issue as far as loading and unloading, and I can't fathom there'd be any decimal of noise issues.
Thank you for that. You reference in your deck, thank you, that you are partnering with the current owner of the building, and you use the word "partnering." Could you say more about what that partnership is, and the context of the partnership?
Well, I mean, it's a private partnership, but Alex is a friend. He's worked with us cooperatively on the lease, and he's participating in the partnership.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Question through the chair to staff.
Please.
Hi, Fatine. What time does a guild stop playing music?
Through the chair, if I may. The guild stops at 11:00 p.m.
In the staff report, could you, well, through the staff report, could you say a little bit more as to your, or the city's collective belief, why 11:00 p.m. is the appropriate time for cessation of music?
Through the chair, if I may. Yes, so our thought was that we do have the Guild Theater next door, and they end at 11:00 p.m. It made, I believe, for consistency purposes, ending this request at 11:00 p.m., as well as the fact that there are residences nearby that may be impacted through the live entertainment, through the loading and unloading of equipment and people coming, as well as if the live entertainment went on till 2:00 a.m., even if the loading issues were nonexistent, as mentioned by the applicant, there might be people that are staying behind longer later for the purposes of live entertainment, and they may also be disruptive during those hours that may affect the neighbors.
And through the chair, staff also coordinated with police, and they concur with our recommendation to have the same time limit as the guild.
May I respond to that?
Let's, let's move on, let's see if anybody else on the Commission would like to speak first, and then, yes, we'll let you respond to that. I had one comment, which, I had one question, if you don't mind.
Can I finish my?
Yeah. It's on the same line, but you go ahead first.
So Ms. Sandmeyer, are you able to say any more about the police department's input and their opinion, and any more color in terms of their thinking, other than to add to the 11 o'clock advisory that they gave?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can really speak to the reasoning. I think part of it certainly has to do with enforcement. And, I mean, staff's recommendation has, is basically a planning staff with concern, staff's recommendation is based on concerns for surrounding residential uses, large numbers of people leaving at the same time, any loading or unloading that's needed late at night, those types of concerns.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished, thank you.
I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to clarify. So the idea is that if the music, or if there is entertainment until 2:00, that would provide more noise than if there is no entertainment, but people are still drinking till 2:00? I guess I'm not seeing how adding acoustic music is going to make a difference if there are already people there potentially drinking and making noise. That, like, that in and of itself is a problem, not necessarily the music. Is there a difference? Can you explain why the idea is that the music or entertainment would be louder than what otherwise might be going on?
Is that a question for the applicant or staff?
It's to staff.
If I may, through the chair, with live entertainment being available, would suggest that there would be people staying back later hours for the purposes of live entertainment, on top of, obviously, consumption of food or alcohol. And as Ms. Sandmeyer already mentioned, a group of people leaving together that late would add to noise for the neighbors.
Okay, and then, I know the applicant is itching to answer as well, so if we, oh, sorry, I got Commissioner Tate first.
Chair Harris's question was very similar to mine. I am not sure that I see a difference here in, because if the venue next door closes at 11:00, and the restaurant immediately next door stays open, and it's a bar, stays open until 2:00 o'clock, even if they are not playing music, which is non-acoustic music, folks from next door are going to migrate over there anyway if they want to continue to be out. So I, I guess I, I'm kind of missing this a little bit. I understand the neighbors, and I'm making sure to keep the volume down and not have a group, big group of people at one time, but it just seems to me, just, it's been a long time since I've been a, you know, nighttime hangout person. I won't disclose how many years that is, but if you're hanging out, and immediately next door, and one joint closes, then you're going to go to the next place that's next door anyway. So I don't, I guess I don't see why the music would make that huge of a difference. And then there's a bar, like, across the street as well, right? The banker, what is that called now? Across from, yeah, the BBC. So El Camino would be the place for this type of venue, I would think. Thank you.
Okay, and then to the applicant, if you wanted to respond as well. Give you a minute.
No, thank you for the follow-up. I mean, respectfully, I just found that tying it to the Guild seemed a little arbitrary, because it's, well, the stage is on the other side of the lot, it's a much bigger, much more, well, it's an amplified, and a well-amplified club, and we're, you know, I tend to agree with both Commissioners commenting on, if we're serving people food and beverage after a show, there's going to be people coming and going, and some relative noise associated with that. I don't see how unamplified music would add accretively to it. And, like, again, I really feel that the loading issue is a non-issue.
Thank you. I kind of like the idea of it being available later. You know, I could see finishing a band at the Guild, and then going next door to kind of wind down and hear maybe something similar, but an acoustic version. It just, it kind of makes sense to me that it would be complimentary versus if they, if this, if the music is stopped at the same time, then you're, you're sort of choosing what you want to see. So, so I guess I'm, I'm feeling fine with the acoustic music going until 2:00.
And that is kind of our goal. You know, we're not, we don't have a calendar of artists, so we're not promising there's going to be anywhere near the activity there is next door. But there could be some real synergy with, you know, a smaller act starting earlier, or winding down after the music stops next door, that could, it could just be very complimentary.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes, and as Chair Harris just mentioned, choosing one or the other, and then if they both stop at the same time, and then it also limits revenue, I would think, stop if they were both tied to the same 11:00 o'clock close-down, because clearly, the restaurant would, most probably, I'll say that, make money, more money after the Guild is closed, with people migrating next door, if they had, you know, more of a lure than just food and drinks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barnes, you had a number of different items, so I didn't, we kind of cut you off as we started talking about the hours of the music. Did you have, were you able to get all of your items?
Thank you for consideration, yes. I had the opportunity to ask and have answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tate.
To the applicant through the chair, I was wondering whether or not the outside entrance, which is being deemed as the ADA pathway, if it's covered?
The walkway?
Yes.
I don't believe it is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
You are not wrong.
If that's the primary entrance for people who need some access ADA, I, if we have a season like we just had, then they, it would preclude them from being able to access the establishment in the rainy season. I'm just thinking if that's the only entrance for them to get in.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I would agree, and I hope that might be something that you all can, you know, reconsider, given that, given that your site plan is not completely worked out. If you can please take a look at that. I have a couple other items. One is that there was an evaluation of the potential for solar panels, and in the staff report, the evaluation cited that there appears to be limited space on the roof. And I was wondering, do we have a visual, this is to staff, of the roof to verify that there is not room for solar?
So through the chair, the roof is semicircular, so that...
The entire roof?
If I may, Chair, could we just check the staff report? I do not recall mention of solar panels.
It was E dot 3 dot 8 dot 10. So while you're checking on that, I have another question to the applicant. So for remodels, our reach code does not apply. However, in this instance, the addition of a kitchen versus a remodel of a kitchen, or retrofitting of a kitchen, this is a new kitchen, have you considered electric? What is the plan for electric versus gas? As you know, there's, this has been a big discussion, not only in our community, but a lot of other places, and there are a lot of restaurants that are moving towards an electric versus a gas stove, too. So we, we don't admit those toxic gases and have damage to the worker's health. If you could please speak to that, the applicant.
Sure. Don't have a finalized kitchen plan, but we were intending to use some gas appliances, unless code prohibited it.
So I would, I would recommend that you take a look at, at least for the gas stoves, replacing with induction cooktops, which can now do just about everything as well. They heat up faster, they're easier to clean, they release less heat into the kitchen, and they provide more control over temperatures. So I would request that you take a look and see if you can accommodate that as you move a little bit further along with your kitchen. Thanks.
Through the chair, if I could add about the walkway along the right side of the building, I don't believe that can be enclosed, because that would require addition of a new wall that, within that required setback. So we'd have to look into whether that's possible, but I think there's limited ability to enclose that area.
Thank you.
All right, do any other Commissioners have any other questions or comments, or a motion? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. So I'm, I'm listening to this conversation, I'm going to call it an inevitable conversation, because when we created the downtown specific plan, a key goal of the plan was to enliven downtown. The idea that the adjacent bar and restaurant to the one entertainment venue that we have in town would cease entertainment at the same hour as, as the Guild makes us wonder, at least it makes me wonder, what our commitment is to enlivening downtown. I do here realize and understand that there is a risk of creating noise on El Camino, and there are residences nearby, not immediately adjacent, but nearby. So there is some risk involved, and I'm wondering if the way to address this risk is with a six-month trial period. And so I throw that out for the Commission's consideration. Would it make sense for us to allow 90 minutes beyond the 11 o'clock curfew for this facility to try out acoustic entertainment, and see whether it has an effect on the noise in
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not certain about that. I think I would be more inclined to go with a 2:00, recognizing that it is a problem, we can make a change. If anybody else wants to speak on that, otherwise, I have one more item that I wanted to bring Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Chair. I personally am fairly agnostic about the time to stop the music. I think there's an opportunity here for live, for music, I think there's an opportunity for entertainment in downtown. The part of it that I'm curious about is when Planner Sandmeyer referenced the police preference for a time to stop, and I wish I had more information on that, because for me, of, an opinion that would supersede what would be a preference for the, for the live, for the vibrancy of downtown would be potentially public safety, and I don't know if it'd be a persuasive argument or not, the reasoning behind stopping at 11:00, but I certainly wish I could hear more about that. Because I do want to enliven the downtown, and also, I want to use a best practice. And I would like for both of those things to, to meet on this particular project. If there was some precedent for having this, and if there is precedent that I'm not aware of, I'd love to understand that. It's, so, is there an opportunity to get that input from the police department as to, as to why? I'll ask that through the chair to the staff.
Yeah, I think part of it had to do with consistency and enforcement. As far as planning staff, the concerns are more about noise and not public safety, just noise and disturbances to really nearby residences.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one more small thing. I agree that there's no need for vehicle parking. However, on page 821, the, it's mentioned that you would expect alternative transportation modes, such as biking and walking. Will you be able to provide some bike parking or bike racks, so that customers could indeed bike to the location and have a safe place to lock up their bikes? so that customers could indeed bike to the location and have a safe place to lock up their bikes? To the applicant.
I guess I'm just saying, like, where would we... We don't really have any... We don't have a dedicated lot where we could put the bike parking. I mean, I... Yeah, I just... I hesitate to allow... I mean, I bike to work often. I'm a cyclist. I walk to the Guild sometimes. Like, I just hesitate to promise anything because I, you know, that side pathway that needs to be clear for ADA access, I just hesitate to offer up allowing any bikes to be parked in back. And I'm not sure where else we could offer bike parking.
Okay, or racks. I'd like you to spend... I don't think you can say that it's... We are expecting alternative transportation modes such as biking if there's no place to put your bike. So just if you can spend a little bit of time thinking through that as you move through this, I think that would be terrific.
Certainly.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. So this is a mechanics question through the chair to staff. In other situations where... So let me back up. I'm inclined to support the live music to a later hour, for instance, the 2:00 AM. But I'm also wondering about a mechanism for a check-in on this. Or... So here's what I'm solving for. When we grant a use permit, the use permit is memorialized in that that runs with the building. Is there a way that, the practical way, in a helpful way to say, okay, great, we are going to approve, should there be a vote and it gets approved, to have live music to, for instance, 2:00 AM? But have that be predicated on looking back after a period of time and saying, great, over, you know, from this date to this date, over a period of 12 months, 18 months, however long it is, to say that there weren't any disturbances. So it sounds like it's a good idea, and 2:00 AM was not problematic. So, you know, carry on. Is that something that, mechanics of that would be doable or advise... would be doable? And that's through the chair to staff.
Yes, I think that would be doable. So we could say six months or one year from occupancy, the applicant would be required to come back to Planning Commission for a review. We could add that as a condition.
And the review would be an objective review, at which time staff would have the ability to pull any complaints or any... How would we know, other than anecdotal or preference, whether there was anything that had showed up on the police broader or otherwise was, you know, indicative of disturbances? How would that be quantified?
Staff could keep track of any complaints we hear and check in with the police periodically to get updates on, you know, any calls they've received.
And then in terms of timing, potentially something at the one-year mark and something at the two-year mark, does that sound to staff's thinking reasonable?
I think that would be reasonable. So is the... The thinking would be to approve it to 2:00 AM with a check-in at one year and another check-in at two years?
Yes, I'm thinking of making a motion to that effect. And the question for me would be, is there... Is it a one-time check-in at 12 months? Is it, you know, one to 12, one to 24, and then carry on from there? Looking for any best practice that staff might have in terms of a timeframe for a check-in and the frequency.
I think it's... I mean, of course, it's up to the commission. I would think if there's no problems after one year, there likely wouldn't be problems after two years. We could make it more... Something closer to occupancy, like six months and a year. But it's up to whoever makes the motion.
Of course.
May I ask a question?
Just let us finish here for a second. Commissioner Barnes and then Commissioner Tate.
Right. So I'm happy to make a motion, and this is not to supersede anything you have to say, Commissioner Tate, to see if it has any legs up here on the dais of approving the conditions of approval, which reference architectural control, interior, exterior, and landscaping, and then a use permit for live entertainment to run to 2:00 AM with a one-year check-in, and then the onsite consumption of alcohol and the provision of the outdoor seating. So I'm happy to have you. I could make the motion or just wait till you have... Till you comment, Commissioner Tate.
Can you repeat that, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes. So I... Essentially, what it is, is to approve the project subject to the conditions of approval, which are called out in the staff report. The only modificate... Well, the primary modification is in the staff report, in the resolution, it calls out the stopping of live music at 11. What my motion would do is say, approve per the staff report, with the exception of running till 2, that being predicated on a one-year check-in, similar to what we discussed, which is to see if there was any disturbances outside of the facility that would warrant, you know, another look at that late hour. That would be my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate, and then we'll go to the applicant. Oh, sorry. I didn't see. Okay, Mr. Schaefer, City Attorney, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I would make a suggestion, or two suggestions. First, that the motions state that any review would be for the purpose of considering if the hours of music should be changed. So they are not reopening the entire use permit, but recognizing that the topic of concern is the live music, and so that would be the purpose of reopening it. My second suggestion would be for you to consider having it a matter of, after six months or a year, if those... Whatever time periods you select for reevaluation, you delegate to staff to determine if there have been complaints to justify scheduling a hearing by the Planning Commission, rather than making it an automatic return to the commission. But that is just one option to reduce perhaps the commission agenda. If there's no need for it, because there have been no complaints, then there may not be no need for a hearing, taking everyone's time.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Schaefer. Commissioner Tate?
So I have a couple of concerns. So one is the mechanism in which the police department will actually review how this is going, disturbances, because there's a difference if this particular property is the only property that's having disturbances on the overall, because, you know, they have that bar component, versus across the city and bars. And I also think some kind of consideration with what's going on with our neighbors and whether or not they are seeing an uptick in the after hour, you know, after regular dinner hour disturbances, because it could be something that's trending that is totally out of the... It has nothing to do really with this particular venue, but it has to do with, unfortunately, the people that are patronizing the establishments across the board at that particular time. This brings me to number two, and that is with being consistent, I understand that this is the specific plan, and hopefully it is going to be under review in areas like this as well. But we also have the potential of Willow Village. Hopefully, it's still coming online, and they are planning to have entertainment there, restaurants. We're not certain at this point what's going in there. So when we look at consistency sake, and we're trying to have one city across the board, I feel like we need to make sure that we are looking at what our plans will be for that area also, because it's... If we're going to not have venues that are able to serve alcohol and have music until 2:00 on El Camino, which is, you know, a commercial district, but we're going to allow that to happen in Bell Haven, then that's not an equal city. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping all of this in mind when we're moving forward, and especially since it was called out to be consistent, and that the police feel like it'll be a disturbance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. So based on Commissioner Tate and the City Attorney, Commissioner Barnes, did you want to restate your motion with any changes?
Yes, thank you, and on two parts. One, thank you to the City Attorney for providing some best practices on how to do this. Very appreciative of that. And thank you, Commissioner Tate, for your points as well. So before I restate, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Tate's desire for consistency. We are talking about serving alcohol till 2. It is the live music component only for this particular project that we're going to review, not necessarily alcohol till 2:00 AM.
Correct, but we don't know what the plans are for the establishments in Willow Village because they're not at that point yet.
Correct. I'm not disputing that, nor am I saying that consistency is not absolutely abhorrent. So yes, your point is not only well noted but well taken, and I think it's critical to look at that, to be consistent across this, because El Camino is a commercial thoroughfare. And if there is anywhere in Menlo Park where you would cite something like this, it would be on El Camino. Where else? Santa Cruz Avenue? No. Sand Hill Road? No. So this is it. This is the location. So I think we're doing something prudent here, which is we're saying, great, staff recommended one thing. We get the Planning Commission appreciate that and also see it with a different lens on, and we're willing to give it a try, and then we're willing to make sure we check in. So to your other question, Commissioner Tate, about how it is that the disturbances are going to be classified to kind of ferret out for like and similar establishments that are both bars, BBC versus this, how is this different from that? And, you know, what's attributable to the live music or not, how that gets divined? And is it part of a general trend across the city, if we see it writ large across the city? I don't know the answer to that, but I think as we close this, we can go back to staff because I think that the determination of whether to report out to the Planning Commission in terms of it being different and the trend lines being different and worth discussing is going to reside with them. So I certainly would want to get satisfaction to that particular point that you make. So what... I don't see any other red lights. What I'll do is simply restate the motion to see if it has any legs up here on the dais. And it is for the... Per the staff report, with the conditions of the approval differing in that the Planning Commission wishes to allow or will... I am making a motion where the Planning Commission would allow for the live music to continue until 2:00 AM. And the Planning Commission also is looking for a one-year review of that 11 to 2 timeframe in terms of live music and is it problematic? And we would look at that from the lens of... We'd come back and revisit it for the purpose only of revisiting the live music, not of the use permit writ large. We would not revisit the other aspects of it. And the staff would only bring back to the Planning Commission this item if it warranted its re-review by the Planning Commission in the opinion of staff. And in the opinion of staff, we can just... I can check back in through the chair with staff one more time in terms of, they could develop how they're going to look at this because they may not have it fully fleshed out. But if they have any ideas at this particular point in time, what those... What that might look like in terms of what's a threshold for whether they bring it back or not, and see if they have any other additional comments on that. But that is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Would someone like to second the motion or have any other statements?
Could we go through chair for that question? Specific to, does staff have any additional thoughts on how they would
Yes, sure.
work through that?
Do you have any additional ideas at this time of how you might work through that?
Yeah, I think it's difficult, maybe just for us to develop a metric. I suppose if there's disturbances, any that are specific to this property, we could bring it back. That would be one way. And I also want to clarify that the response we received from the police wasn't that this would be a disturbance. It was more just concurring with planning staff's recommendation of ending at 11:00 PM.
Okay, so I can clarify that that... My motion as put forward a moment ago still stands, and I've taken that under advisement, and I still keep that posted on the floor.
And for staff, for this motion, I just wanted to clarify that what you would be taking a look at would be just the portion of complaints perhaps about the music, not about the fact that it's serving alcohol till 2:00 AM, correct? Per the District Attorney, or per the City Attorney?
Yeah, I think it might be difficult to say if there's a noise disturbance, if it's what it's caused by. So that might be difficult. I mean, we could... I suppose we could just say, we'll bring it back if there's any complaints related to this establishment. I don't know if anyone from the City Attorney's Office has maybe a better idea, but that's what I have for now.
I'm happy to speak on that. So we would recommend that the condition be limited to revisiting the time period, the 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM in the event of complaints involving nuisance or public health or safety or something like that. So not a broader scope than that.
And I feel comfortable that if we are having that discussion a year from now, we can use common sense to figure out what the reasoning was behind it. So I personally am comfortable with that.
And what would also... Sorry, on another... Before we kind of get up to a vote, what would be the mechanism for understanding the coming back to us with the roof and the potential for solar, since we don't seem to know that right now?
We could... Yeah, if the Planning Commission would like to direct us to bring that back with a condition memo, if the Planning Commission would like to add a condition that we bring it back after reviewing the potential and working with the applicant to see what type of solar could be added to the roof.
Guys from the applicant, we don't have the ability to do solar, given the amount of roof space and our budget.
Okay. And it was a little bit unclear in the staff report because it said it appears that there isn't enough room. But there wasn't any clarification or conclusion on that. So that's why I'm asking. Do you have... Have you worked through with a solar company on that?
We didn't present anything to staff that included solar. It's not viable in our eyes.
Okay. Mr. Wazni?
Yes, thank you. I'm the architect for this project as well as for the Guild.
Yes, thank you. I'm the architect for this project as well as for the Guild. I concur that solar is not feasible. Our roof is gabled, not domed. The front parapet has a round parapet top, but behind that is a simple gable. However, this, the building immediately to the south of our building is 45 feet high, which is the Guild Theater. So the solar panels on that south-facing gable roof would be in shade probably 80% of the time. So I don't think the investment would ever be worthwhile.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. Appreciate the clarity on that. Okay, so we're back to the motion. What, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tate.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I think I need some more clarity around the recommendation for reviewing, and it is, from what I understand, the attorney's office is saying from 11:00 to 2:00, and specifically this property. But then that takes out the whole thing about seeing whether or not there's something that's consistent that's going on throughout the community and not just this property. Because if there's disturbances that are across the street also at the, even though they don't have music at the, what's it called, BBC? BBC, it still stays open until 2:00, and they serve alcohol. So, and it's right across the street. So even though they are not exactly the same, they are very similar in nature. So I think what, where I'm going with this is I would hate for this particular establishment to be penalized when there is something that is trending across the board and with similar type establishments. So I'm not sure how to work through that. I don't know, that's probably a question for the city attorney since you made the recommendation on how to craft this. Thank you.
Okay, if the city attorney could weigh in a little bit and let us know what, how we might put that language in so that we are not penalizing one establishment, given that there might be a trend, and we're just, just ensuring that we're being fair and equitable.
That would be something the staff could discuss, but really, if we want to revisit specifically this particular condition for this particular restaurant, there would have to be some kind of way that you can assess the complaints about this particular restaurant if you want to revisit that condition in the future in terms of the time.
I guess I'm wondering, wouldn't, if you were taking a look at complaints of this establishment, you would look at them as, how incremental are they to what other bars or establishments are seeing? So if you can add some of that language in there that we, when you're looking at it, are they, are these, if there were such complaints, would they be incremental to what would be expected and what is seen at other establishments in the area?
That sounds, I mean, if, Ed, you have any thoughts on this too? That sounds, that sounds okay, but I would love to hear Ed's thoughts as well.
I'm looking at this from the back, the backdrop of, I often see, for instance, cities approve fast food restaurants with drive-through windows, and the neighbors express concern about late night noise, or they establish, they allow it through till 10:00 p.m., but they add a condition to be revisited in six months and possibly reduce the hours. And unlike a standard code enforcement nuisance enforcement, because you're approving a use permit for this business where you could deny all live music if you wish, then you're able to set conditions, and if this is a concern, then you are able to have a lower standard in my mind than a nuisance to be able to reduce the time for the, for the good of the public health, for the good of the neighborhood. I would, you're right that it could be complaints of activity that are commingling people leaving this restaurant from someplace nearby, and that would be a matter of what the evidence is that staff compiles and the owner, the applicant, the owner would have the opportunity to rebut that, and it would be a question of if it's a gray area of where is it truly coming from? That might be an open question. But then you also have the point of, the city see a problem if they've got four bars in the same neighborhood and they all let out it too, and you suddenly you've got 100 people hitting the streets. That's a cumulative issue. That is a concern for many cities that have that type of concentrated use. And is, it is appropriate to regulate or in attempt to regulate to avoid the problems.
Can the applicant make a, have a question and make a comment?
Sure.
So my comment to Mr. Schaefer's earlier reference to maybe being conscious of commission's resources and time is, it does seem pretty superfluous to require this to come back to the commission, but my question is, why wouldn't this just fall under the same, you know, code requirements you have for nuisance and noise? Why are we, why are we applying different standards? And this is, this is a restaurant that serves alcohol with potentially unamplified live music. So why wouldn't it just be held to the same nuisance and noise standard? And if there's an issue here or at the BBC or at, pick a restaurant, you know, it's handled the same way. You know, we certainly can't have, I just, I don't know how you're gonna define this, and we certainly can't have our hours of operation, which we have proposed and have been recommended.
Thank you. I think we got the point.
Well, no, no, just to finish, just to finish, I need to be very clear that our hours of operation, we have requested our 11 to 2, that recommendation's been passed on to the commission, and I can't have those in jeopardy because we have to revisit this at staff or the planning commission level. And there's, you know, accretive noise. I cannot have our business hours jeopardized. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not about the business hours, it's about the music that we're, that we're concerned about with respect to this. So I think we can, Commissioner Riggs.
Well, my light has only been on because I'd like to second the motion by Commissioner Barnes.
Okay, thank you. So we've got a first and a second. Commissioner Tate, did you want to make any other comments before we vote?
No, I have no other comments, just what I previously stated, and I'm not sure how to fold that in.
Through the chair, it might be helpful for Commissioner Barnes to restate the motion and also clarify the timing is from occupancy.
Sure, happy to do that. And this is not in any attempt to persuade you, Commissioner Tate. I do think just from a practical perspective, as I think about this particular project and wanting this project to be successful, and at the same time wearing a planning commissioner hat, if I take, for instance, the idea of this being conflated with an issue down the road, if we think about Menlo Park, if we think about El Camino Real, the BBC is a good distance down, and I, it would be, I think, difficult to conflate an issue down there with an issue in front of this particular restaurant, just from a practical perspective. Not saying it wouldn't happen, but I think you have an isolated establishment here that would not be that challenging to isolate on. And I think the common sense approach to this is, is there something specific to this particular establishment between the hours of 11:00 and 2:00 that become problematic because they have music? 12 months from now, it may be a non-issue. So that's, I will restate it in a moment. So allow me to restate the, to Commissioner, excuse me, to Planner Santa Myers' request to restate this. My motion is, per the staff report, approve the conditions of approval with the exception being specific to revisiting the, excuse me, with the exception being carving out the 11 to 2 music timeframe. And the mechanism for going back and looking at that would be specific to the staff in 12 months from operation, making a determination as to whether, based on the trend lines in the community, this establishment is creating, or this establishment is seen as being responsible for disturbances in that 11 to 2 timeframe that the commission would again take a look at. And it's not a determination of what the planning commission would do, it would just be to review in 12 months if there's something specific to this establishment between the hours of 12 and 2 related to live music. And that would be the only part of this that we would be relooking at, that staff would be relooking at, and if staff elevated to the planning commission, the planning commission would be relooking at. And that may not be satisfactory to the members up on the dais, but that's my, that's my motion.
So I appreciate you putting trending in there because that's exactly what I was saying. And, and I think that this dais has the ability to flush things out because what in one person's mind is common sense, when it's on the paper, and this is what our motion is, we want to make sure that it is followed in the way, in the vein that we presented it, so that it is not left to whoever the reader or interpreter, their view of common sense is. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're at the point where we could take a vote. So Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm also a yes, so the motion passes 4 to 0 with 2 absences. Thank you to the applicant and to staff for helping us through this. We're now going to move on to, let's see, it's almost 9:00. You know what, let's take a five-minute recess, and then we're gonna come back and take a look at the next item on the agenda, which is F2 and G1, which are both regarding the Tarleton property at 125 O'Brien. Thanks, 5 minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Staff. Good evening.
Welcome back. We are now moving on in the agenda to F2 and G1, which are associated with a single staff report, and I'm gonna read F2. It's rather long, so just bear with me. It's a draft environmental impact report for Tarleton Properties at 1105 to 1165 O'Brien Drive and 1 Casey Court, which we're gonna refer to as 1125 O'Brien Drive Project. The public hearing to receive comments on the draft EIR to develop a five-story research and development building containing approximately 131,000 square feet of gross floor area in the Life Sciences Bonus Zoning District. This includes 129,000 square feet of R&amp;D uses and 2,659 square feet of commercial cafe uses. The project site consists of four parcels containing three one-story buildings of approximately 59,866 square feet and will be referred to as 1125 O'Brien Drive. The proposed project would include 229 parking spaces and surface parking lots located behind the building and adjacent to the building along O'Brien Drive. The proposed project includes request for a use permit, architectural control, below-market rate housing in lieu fee, and environmental review. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The applicant is proposing payment of a community amenities in lieu fee. The project includes a hazardous materials use permit, request to allow a diesel generator to operate the facilities in the event of a power outage or emergency. The proposed project includes request to modify the surface parking along street frontage requirements along Casey Court and to transfer development rights in height from the applicant-controlled parcel at 1140 O'Brien Drive to comply with a zoning ordinance average height requirement. The proposed project is requesting an exemption from the city's reach code to allow for the use of natural gas for space conditioning in the laboratory spaces. The proposed project also includes a request to remove 11 heritage trees. The focused draft EIR was prepared to address potential physical environmental effects of the proposed project in the following areas: transportation, population and housing, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and that's with operation, traffic noise, construction noise and vibration, cultural and tribal resources, and biological resources. The draft EIR identifies significant and unavoidable environmental impacts from noise and greenhouse gases. And the city is requesting comments on the content of this draft EIR. Written comments on the draft EIR may be submitted to the Community Development Department at 701 Laurel Street no later than 5:00 p.m. on May 8th of 2023. So as we discuss the EIR, staff, would you like to advise the, how you would like to proceed? Is there a staff presentation and EIR consultant presentation, applicant presentation?
Vice Chairman, I guess I will begin. My name is Dave Hogan. I'm the contract planner on this project. We had envisioned with the commission's permission to have three presentations tonight. The first, an introduction by staff, followed up by a presentation by the project applicant, and then ending with a presentation by the city's EIR consultant to help frame the comments on the EIR. So if that's acceptable, then we will, I will begin with my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. That sounds like a plan.
This is item F2, which is the public hearing on the draft environmental impact report. Next, please. Because I don't have, there we go. So our recommended format for the evening is starting off with a draft EIR. Again, as I said, my, they'll have my presentation, then the presentation by the applicant, presentation by the EIR consultant. At that point, we're recommending that you open up the public hearing to receive public comments on the draft EIR, comments on the EIR on environmental issues, even if they're not in writing, if they're presented verbally tonight, they will still be evaluated by the city and the EIR consultant and incorporated into a response to comments in the final EIR. After public comments, then we would recommend that the commission provide comments on the draft EIR. And when all the comments on the EIR, not necessarily the design of the project, then staff would recommend that you close the draft, the public hearing, which will be item F2, and then go to item G1. Again, there will be a very brief introduction by staff, commissioner, questions on the project, on the staff report, and those will be answered by either staff or the applicant, depending upon the nature of the question. At that point, we would recommend that public comments on the proposed project be made available. And then after the public has commented, then we'd like to see the commission's comments on the proposed project. Next, please. Thank you. Okay, this gives a general location for the project. You can, you see the Facebook, commissioners, can you see my, my mouse on the screen?
Is it, is it moving? Move it a little.
Yeah, okay, maybe not. Okay, never mind. You can see the project is, consists of four lots in a largely light industrial area of the city. And so, yeah, there it is. And then you can see the residential areas surrounding it and its location. You see the Facebook campus at the top. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the zoning map. Based upon the connect Menlo process the city went through, a lot of this area was redesignated. city went through, a lot of this area was redesignated as Life Sciences. The properties north of O'Brien Drive all have the Life Science Bonus. The Life Science areas adjacent to East Palo Alto and the residential neighborhoods, neighborhoods there do not have the balance, do not have the, the bonus potential. Next, next slide, please. Thank you. So there are five future actions on this project. First is the environmental review, and that's what we're discussing. There's also a use permit request for the generator and some of the parking issues. The actual use is permitted, so the use is permitted under the zoning code. The use permit is for other design elements. Then there's architectural review, which is definitely something that we'd like to hear back from the commission on tonight, on the design of the building and the design of the site. One of the issues is also going to be a lot merger, and we will be, in your staff report, I believe it's Attachment B that shows the three lots being merged into one, which is being called Parcel 1 in the project. Parcel 2 is the existing parcel, which is going to be accessory parking lot. Then, of course, there's heritage tree removal permits. As this, as the applicant went through this process, two of the 13 heritage trees, the project was modified to preserve those onsite. Next, please. Here we have a close-up of the site, and the applicant will go in much more detail. See Parcel 1 with the building and Parcel 2, which is part, which is just the parking lot above that. The, the two parking lots do not connect internally, and that was something that staff would like the commission's feedback on. Next, please. So this is a reminder to a lot of the people monitoring the meeting. There's two elements tonight, and we've talked about it previously. The first is getting comments on the draft environmental impact report. Then there's a study session, getting design comments on the project. There were, the commission will not be taking any formal actions tonight on the project or the draft EIR. The comment period ends on Monday, May 8th at 5:00 PM, so all comments received before that will be evaluated. And in the final event, the planning commission will be the final decision-making body that will certify the EIR and consider the, the various land use entitlements that the applicant has submitted for. Next, please. Thank you. I am just about done with my brief presentation. Next, we will have the project applicant and followed by the EIR consultant. And at that point, we will, we're recommending that you open up the public hearing, get comments from the public, your comments, and then we will proceed with the, with the study session. And next, please, that concludes my presentation, and I'd ask that the, the applicant's presentation be loaded up and give them the opportunity to share their project with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. To the applicant, please.
EIR consultants for all of their hard work, and to each of you for the service you provide to the city in reviewing applications like ours and participating in countless hours of public hearings. In an effort to be efficient, my comments will be tailored to both the EIR comment agenda item and the study session. The proposed project, which has received positive feedback from this body several times over the last four and a half years, has been updated to incorporate comments we received during our last public hearing, in addition to feedback from staff. As you all know, because you've, you've heard me appear a couple of times, the Menlo Park Life Science District has been quietly churning out world-changing life science innovations for 40 years. From the original nicotine patch to the first commercially available pan-cancer biopsy, not to mention the first commercially available COVID-19 test in the U.S., Menlo Park Labs has helped nurture dozens and dozens of innovations that have simultaneously lowered the cost of health care and improved patient outcomes. Menlo Park Labs has also been home to several sustainability leaders. You may be pleased to know that Impossible Foods, formerly Meat 2.0, was born in a building right across the street from this project, and our latest addition to the park, Windfall Bio, who is enabling climate-positive agriculture. At the same time, Menlo Park Labs has been a leader in creating jobs across a broad socioeconomic and education spectrum and significant sales tax revenue for the city. Finally, we have led in our own sustainable practices, often adopting and instituting sustainable practices long before they are required, and that sometimes set the new standard for others. Since our last presentation, we have modified the project to address concerns previously raised by the planning commission as well as by staff. You will see these changes in more detail later in the presentation. I'd like to call your attention to two specific areas. One is the potential heat island effect of surface parking areas. As you will see, we will be planting a large number of trees on this project. Many of these will help shade the parking areas. In addition, we will be utilizing solar reflective materials in the parking areas to dramatically reduce residual heat island effect. The second is connectivity. With the help of staff, we've been able to create a new pedestrian connection that will provide future access to the Willow Village site for both Menlo Park and East Palo Alto residents and visitors. There's a visual of this later in the presentation. I'm available for questions, but with that, I will turn over the presentation to Elka McGregor, an incredibly talented architect who has successfully led countless life science projects for our team.
Evening, Commissioners. I'm Elka McGregor with DES, and this is our 18th building that we've built with Tarleton Properties in Menlo Park. Kind of cool. The focus on those buildings in the last 15 years has been life science. And this building is located in the center of the Life Science District. Who should I be looking at? Thank you. Next. So the circle there indicates where this building is, in the center of the Life Science Campus, and it is a block from residential. It's adjacent to the Hetch Hetchy, which runs through the center of the park and through the center of the Life Science District. It also borders Willow Village, so, yeah, thanks. It, in this sketch here, you can see the whole sort of tree-planted street that's O'Brien Drive that connects Willow to University. This drive was identified and connect Menlo as an area where they wanted to have a Class 2 bicycle connection. So in our building, as in most of the buildings in the park, we have bicycle parking at the interior and exterior, as well as shower facilities. There's also a shuttle service that extends throughout the whole Menlo Park Labs to provide connection to adjacent public transit areas. We have multiple traffic reduction measures that are included in this project. This goes into a list of some of those. The shower changing facilities onsite here are also complemented at the fitness center, which is two blocks down the road on O'Brien Drive. The traffic reduction that we've been able to do on this site, or what we're planning on this site, is bolstered by the efficiency that we've achieved on other projects. So our estimated efficiency, we usually double that on our projects, and we've reduced traffic nearly twice what the code requirements are. Next slide, please. This is, these are some of the buildings in the current Menlo Park Labs site. There are multiple large and small tenants on campus here. One of those is Pacific Biosciences in the bottom-left corner, and the top-right and bottom-right are images of the cafe that's on campus. It serves the area for all of the local people. So this is for the neighborhood as well as the people that are in the buildings on campus. There's also a fitness center The next slide, please. There currently are four buildings plus a mechanical shed on sites. These are all concrete tilt buildings that will be replaced with a new building. John mentioned that we had a garage on site previously in the last image, so we are now, we purchased the property adjacent, so the three concrete tilt buildings plus the one behind it will now be a building plus a parking at grade, which was preferred by the planning commission, I think, for future flexibility in the last time we were presenting this in 2018. These are the images of those marvelous buildings. They probably were marvelous at one point. So this is just a quick image that shows you the two properties, the one on the top, which is hatched, which would become the parking, and the bottom one that has the three existing concrete tilt buildings. This slide shows you the connection that we're proposing, and we worked with Planning Commission. There wasn't, this wasn't a request from the Planning Commission. It was from the Planning Department, but it was definitely something we discussed at the last meeting. And it was the ability to provide a connection for the residents of Palo, or Menlo Park through our property site up to the Hetch Hetchy and future Willow Village connection. So this provides connection from Kavanaugh Street and O'Brien Drive between the two properties and up to the Hetch Hetchy area. This is provided by way of a meandering path. It shows it better on the next slide. What this slide indicates is that we are exceeding the public and the private open space requirements for the city. This slide shows you that that pathway is tree-covered, provides lots of points of connection to adjacent buildings, in addition to having some open space seating that is also tree-shaded. We kept as many healthy trees on the property as we could. Quite a few of them are high water or no longer in great shape, so the ones we did keep were what was possible on the site. This building is going to be lead gold. We've been working with the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural teams and our sustainability team to provide quality daylighting views for the tenants, reduce the environmental footprint, and also incorporate sustainable materials. The connecting pathway, this shows you, there's a cafe included on the main floor of the building. It's in the bottom right-hand corner that opens up to a plaza adjacent to the building and provides a public open space as well as the amenities pictured here to all the local neighborhood as well as to the building tenants. The last slide is an image of some of the finishes. We have, of course, bird-safe glass on the building. The glazing on this building is scientifically specific tinted. It's low E, and the facade materials have been selected for longevity and beauty. For the next slide. These are the last two images of the building. This is the overall facade, and the next slide shows you the entrance. If you're walking a little closer to the building, you're looking at a view into the entry. To the right of the entrance is a, a conference room and a cafe facility that would be open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to the EIR consultant.
Can we pull up our presentation? Thank you. Good evening, Acting Chair Harris, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Victoria Chung, and I am the project manager for the 1125 O'Brien Drive Project EIR. Next slide. We worked with the City of Menlo Park's Planning Department, along with Hexagon, who was the traffic consultant, and KMA, who did the housing needs assessment on this, on this EIR document. Next slide. So tonight I'll be going over the following presentation topics: the purpose of this hearing, project overview, the environmental review process, the overview of the draft environmental impact report, aka EIR, the next steps in the SEQA process, and then how to comment on the draft EIR. Next slide. So the purpose of this public hearing is to summarize the proposed project and conclusions in the draft EIR, and to provide an overview of the SEQA process and next steps, to receive public input on the analyses presented in the draft EIR, and then finally to review next steps in the SEQA process. Next slide. So the applicant and city staff have already gone over the project, the proposed project, but basically for our EIR, we sort of separated the bottom portion of the project as Parcel 1 and the top portion of the project as Parcel 2, just to make the more technical areas of analyses easier for us. And you'll see why when we get to, when we discuss the impacts that are going to occur in the, for the project. Next slide. So this is generally for the general public, but the environmental review process and the purposes of SEQA, it provides decision-makers with, and the public with information about the significant environmental effects of the proposed project, and to also identify potential feasible mitigation and alternatives that would reduce significant effects due to the project. And also, the environmental review process focuses on, of the analyses focuses on the physical impacts of the environment. And lastly, it's so that the agency decision-makers are able to consider the EIR and other input in making its, your decisions on the project. Next slide. So the environmental review process, we're just going to focus on the, the black boxes for now, and then we'll discuss the gray boxes towards the end of this presentation. So the notice of preparation and the initial study was done between July 30th, 2021, and August 31st, 2021. The scoping meeting occurred August 9th, 2021, and that was to receive comments on the scope of the EIR. And then the draft EIR is currently under public review, and it's a 45-day public review period, and it started March 31st and ends on May 8th, 2023. And then lastly, we're, we're here at the public hearing today to discuss the EIR. So the initial study that was done in 2021, it scoped out several impact areas, and so this is why this EIR has, is primarily concentrated on specific impact areas. The, the project itself is within the Connect Menlo study area and tiers off the Connect Menlo EIR. This is required by SEQA for projects that have, that may have significant environmental impacts. It identifies potential physical environmental impacts of the project. This informs the public and public agency decision-makers prior to project approval or disapproval, and recommends ways to reduce significant effects, and also considers project alternatives that may lessen potential impacts. Next slide. So the, the issues that are studied in this focused EIR are air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, greenhouse gases, noise, population, housing, transportation, and alternatives. So the impacts and mitigation measures that we found, that we concluded in this EIR, we had significant and unavoidable impacts. Those were related to greenhouse gas, and there's a little air, it wasn't during construction, it was during operation, and that's due to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's new updated thresholds, which is why we had to do the which is why we had to do the electric feasibility study. And then the other significant and unavoidable impacts were related to construction noise and vibration. And this was due to the city's noise thresholds in relation to ambient noise. And vibration, significant unavoidable impacts, that was due to potential construction being close to commercial areas, and that was its vibration annoyance and not, related to vibration annoyances. The EIR also found that the less than significant with implementation of mitigation measures were related to transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas, noise, cultural and tribal cultural resources, and biological resources. Next slide. And then lastly, these issue areas found that there would be less than, less than significant impacts with implementation of mitigation measures in the initial study. So those were cultural resources, geology and soils, and hazards. Next slide. In our EIR, we discussed three different project alternatives. The first alternative is required by SEQA, which is the no project alternative, which would assume that the existing uses on site and site conditions would change. So all four buildings would stay the same, no development would happen, all buildings on O'Brien Drive and Casey Court would remain in their current state. The next alternative is the base level alternative, and that involves new development consistent with the base level of development allowed by the city zoning code, which is up to 55% floor area ratio on both parcel one and parcel two. And this was selected based on its potential to reduce the transportation and greenhouse gas emission impacts. And then finally, the environmentally superior alternative, which is the reduced base level alternative, that involves development consistent with the base level development allowed by the city zoning code, again, up to 55% floor area ratio. But the development would only happen on parcel one, and parcel two would remain the same, and the existing site uses and conditions would, would be available for future redevelopment. But, but development would primarily happen on parcel one. Next slide. And so what are the next steps for the environmental review process? We would, after public hearing and collecting the comments during the public comment period, the, we would prepare the final EIR that addresses the response to comments received during the draft EIR comment period. And then it would be up to the decision makers to take action on whether to approve the, the proposed project in ER. And if you would like to comment via email, you would email davidhogan@dwhogan@menlopark.gov or via letter, and sending in a letter to David Hogan, contract planner, community development department, planning division at 701 Laurel Street, Menlo Park, California, 94025. Or tonight, you could raise your hand via Zoom, and you'll be notified to speak. And all comments must be received by May 8th at 5:00 PM. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. Okay, with the presentations completed, I'd like to ask the commission if there are any clarifying questions before we turn to public comment on the EIR. Okay, seeing none. I would like to open up public comment. And I just wanted to remind the public that this, these are comments for the, the EIR. We will have another option for public comment when we bring back the project for the study session. So please only raise your hand now if you have comments that relate to the, the draft EIR. All right, so please, let's, how many, do we have some hands raised?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Acting Chair Harris. The moment I see three hands raised, I'm happy to begin the comment period. Now we have four. And as a reminder, anyone on Zoom, please press your hand icon if you'd like to speak, or press star nine on the phone if you're calling in for tonight's meeting. Or if you're in person, please come by with a comment card to yours truly, and I can, I can assist with in-person commenting as well. I'm happy to begin if you'd like.
Thank you. Let's begin, Mr. Perdue.
Thank you. Our first commenter is Keita Dev. I will allow you to speak at this time, and you'll have three minutes in just one moment. Okay, I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself. You'll have three minutes. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Am I, am I unmuted? Hello?
Yes, you are. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening. This is Keita Dev with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter. I wanted to bring up two comments regarding the EIR. One is, I just wanted to mention that in, I believe in other cities, the biotech labs are able to have the HVAC systems not using natural gas. Most cities do allow natural gas to be used in the lab spaces because of the bunsen burners for experiments, but the actual heating and ventilating systems do not believe they allow them to use natural gas. So I've not read the, the justification report, but I, I just wanted to mention that. The other item was that there is not a water budget that's been mentioned in the EIR. And it mentioned there's a process for looking at a water budget after one year, but it does not say at this point, any assumption of what the water budget might be. And we just wanted to know what that expectation is. I believe it should be spelled out. One other item which the EIR doesn't seem to address very well is, maybe doesn't have a good category for it, is the biosafety level. We're assuming that these will be biosafety level labs, one in level one and level two. But if there is anticipation to have biosafety level three, then that brings up a lot of environmental concerns because these are transmitted aerosol transmission, have extremely stringent HVAC requirements and containment requirements. And those are, there, there are a lot of environmental impacts from potential, potential release of these agents. So the EIR is lacking in that area. Just wanted to bring that up. The final item is noise. There seems to be a good amount of study done on the noise. However, they make it very clear they have no idea what actual equipment might be there, or that when they're all on simultaneously, it could be extremely noisy. So this is an issue that has been brought up many times before with regards to labs and their very robust HVAC systems. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Lynn Bramlett. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself now, and you'll have three minutes as well. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lynn Bramlett, resident of District Three, Mills Court. I'm also the leader of MPC Ready, which is a neighborhood level disaster preparedness organization. Tonight, I'm speaking for myself. However, as the leader of MPC Ready, I've become quite informed about our area's general preparedness or not for a disaster. And what I see in District One, I, I realize this is a comment on the EIR, is a general piecemeal approach to development that I think new information warrants a review. It, it also is starting very late at night, and the public is commenting after 9:30. And to my knowledge, the city has not conducted trainings, especially in District One, in how to comment effectively on EIRs. This, one of the prior speakers mentioned Connect Menlo. I continue to hear tearing off Connect Menlo EIR. However, the Connect Menlo EIR, just, the program level EIR dismissed the threat of the Hayward Fault eruption, which is a very real hazard with potentially significant impact to Menlo Park. And I can say, in my role with MPC Ready, though I'm speaking for myself, the City of Menlo Park, the County of San Mateo, and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District are all completely unprepared for biohazards or biohazard release incident, and also unprepared for the eruption of the Hayward Fault. So it seems to me, these EIR meetings don't take into account kind of a new model that incorporates issues pertaining to general safety, especially safety of the residents living near, near these areas, East Palo Alto, Bell Haven, and, you know, any problems could very certainly affect not just that area, but the rest of Menlo Park. So I agree with the speaker from the Sierra Club, the woman who spoke before me with her concerns that she's raising about water noise. I think a lot of concerns are kind of, there, there is inadequate fact-based assurances that the water will be there, et cetera. So thank you, commissioners, for your time tonight. I, I think the industry itself should be looked at more from a public safety point of view. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Naomi Goodman. I'm going to let you unmute yourself at this time as well, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Thank you. My name's Naomi Goodman. I'm speaking for myself as a resident of Menlo Park District Two. Similar to the previous speakers, I have concerns regarding the lack of information in the EIR on the types of R and D that will be allowed in the proposed Life Sciences Building. It's located within 500 feet of a residential area and an elementary school in a high-hazard liquefaction zone. Biotech research can run the gamut from innocuous to deadly if a biological agent escapes from a lab. Such escapes do happen. I refer you to the U.S. Right2Know website for examples. The residents of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto deserve transparency on the risks to which they could be unknowingly exposed. Neither Connect Menlo or the draft EIR addresses allowable biosafety levels. Tenants could engage in research requiring biosafety level three containment. BSL3 labs handle high-risk pathogens that are difficult to control as they're airborne and very contagious when released. Containment depends on mechanical systems that can fail through human error, mechanical failure, or disasters. These labs are appropriate where there are scientific safety oversight committees that ensure an understanding of risks. Menlo Park does not have such a committee in place, and no other government agency has any responsibility for the safety of private biotech labs. Menlo Park is not prepared at, at present to take the role of guardian of public safety for biotech labs. If the project is approved, the use permit should stipulate there will be no R and D requiring BSL3 procedures, and a process should be set up by Menlo Park to verify those assurances. Failure to consider potential impacts of future uses of the building is a major flaw in the EIR. I request that the final EIR evaluate the potential for human health and ecological hazard from the spectrum of target organisms that may be used in the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Jenny Michelle. I'd like to add, this appears to be the last commenter with their hand raised at this time. So I'm going to let you be able to speak, and you'll have three minutes as well, starting now. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Neighbors, Members of the Public. My name is Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block, bringing you tales from the leveraged labor crypt. Longtime renting resident on Willow Road, mother of IEP student, recovering homeless teacher, and by trade, a commercial property manager. I support this applicant and the incredible inherent value they bring to our city. I'm excited about this development opportunity, both as a colleague in the industry, but also as a lifelong resident and parent. One thing I'd like to call out to ask this body to require or enact some mechanism to ensure this applicant hires local labor. In the spirit of the EIR, reducing vehicle miles driven and investing in local families is a bonus win-win to all. As a world-class employer, we would hope as residents that you believe in us and offer us the opportunity to work with you on future endeavors. Stabilizing the local labor force is an understated urgent priority to minimize overall risk applicable to all real property assets, which always impacts the environmental scope of a project. To the public comments, reinforcing the structure to secure the residents away from some type of contamination, knowing that you're in a liquefaction zone prone to water rise implications is a must. And although the area is zoned for the bio labs use, it does not take into consideration the risk associated with such use. The applicant is encouraged to support moving away from gas components. Outside of that, I appreciate your due diligence, and you're proposing this forward-looking project. All my best, Jenny.
Thank you very much for your comment. At this time, I see no additional commenter hands raised, and no one from the council chamber is looking to provide a comment as well. We waited for a little while. If you'd like, we can wait a moment longer, Acting Chair Harris, or we can close the public comment period for this particular part of the item.
I think that we've waited long enough. We can close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and questions related to the EIR. Who would like to start? Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, thank you. Although public comment by three Zoom participants is not exactly representative of a overall and citywide reaction, one cannot help but notice the recurring theme regarding biosafety. So I would like to ask, through the chair, if I may, ask of staff, when the tenants apply to Tarleton Properties to do their tenant improvements, is there scope of work brought to us for tenant space review?
Through the chair. So the, the normal procedure is for it to go to outside agencies, including county health and the fire district. And based on input, we can always update that process also. And I think we have David Hogan here too, to answer more specific questions about the project.
At, at the commissioners, at this point, according to the applicant, they don't have a specific tenant, so it's hard for staff to identify, you know, who's actually going to be in the building. The zoning code does not provide specific direction on how to address the different bio levels. Once the commission receives this project, either the applicant will have a better idea of who their tenant will be, or, and/or the commission will be in a position then to consider the appropriate level and what other requirements they might see, think are appropriate in terms of limiting or not limiting the bio level in the proposed building from future tenants.
All right, if I may summarize then. This is the meeting. This is the hearing. This is the opportunity to talk about biohazard levels. Is that correct, Mr. Hogan?
From the perspective of the EIR, I, I would say yes. If you think that the EIR should address it, then I think this is a good time. Otherwise, I would suggest that maybe doing that as part of the study session might be a little bit more focused on the issue because that will facilitate staff and the applicant in terms of taking the steps necessary to, to begin to address the commission's concerns.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
And through the chair, I did want to clarify any future tenant improvements would not go to the planning commission. So those would go through an administrative process. And in this case, I don't know if the applicant has more information to share on potential potential future tenants.
No, I have the answer to my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Would anyone else like to speak on the E I R? I have a question. I have some comments on the housing needs assessment as well as transportation, T D M and T I A. And I'm wondering the information that I've gleaned is from the E I R, especially the appendices. However, most of my comments would refer to items that I would want to be seen in the project. So I'm a little bit unclear as to whether I should discuss them now or if I should wait until the study session.
Madam Chairman, based upon what you told me, it sounds like it's more related to the project design than to the environmental impact report. The city's settlement agreement with the city of East Palo Alto required that population and housing and transportation both be addressed in the E I R. And the housing need assessment prepared by K M A is the source document for evaluating those issues specifically at the request of the city of East Palo Alto. So as I understand it, the document has been prepared consistent with all the other documents. If you feel that the project should be adjusted or modified in some way, I would suggest that may come under the study session. If your comments relate to the analysis in the E I R, then I think that would be best addressed now. I hope that answers my, answers your question.
Thank you. Oh, you know what? I will wait until the study session for some of these comments.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments on the draft E I R? Okay. It seems that we as a commission don't have other comments on the draft E I R. So I think we can close that portion of tonight's session and move on to G one, which is the study session. And we will need to reopen public comment for anyone who would like to make comments on the project itself in advance of the commissioners discussing in our study session. So if Mr. Prater, you could again open public comment, and this would be for anyone who would like to speak on the project itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Chair Harris. As a reminder to the members of the public in attendance, please feel free to raise your hand and or press star nine if you're calling by phone. And also members of the public in the council chambers, if they are interested in providing a comment, you can provide me with a comment card. I see two hands now, so I'm happy to begin that process for this public comment period.
Please.
Thank you. Our first commenter is Naomi Goodman. I will set up the three minutes for you to speak and actually appears that that person just came off, but we have another commenter, Gita Dave. I will allow you to unmute yourself again. You have three minutes to speak, starting when you begin. Thank you.
Excuse me, I thought, I thought Naomi Goodman was being called upon. But I'm happy to talk to the planning commission. Gita Dev.
If I may, I'm sorry. You, you may begin. She had come off of the Zoom interface. I apologize for interrupting, but she may reappear and just in the spirit of time, you're still on here with your hand raised. So we're happy to start with you and then we can follow up if Naomi comes back on after you.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Planning Commission. And thank you, Plan Commissioner Riggs, for your observation on biosafety. There, there are two areas that are sort of interested in from, from a community point of view. One is the issue of biosafety. And the other is issues of community concern such as noise. The, the H V A C in the E I R, as I mentioned, has not been, they've not been able to study it because they don't know what their tenants are. Therefore, they don't know what equipment they're going to buy. But they do say that if all the equipment is running simultaneously, that would be very noisy. The, and this is, this is a very serious issue. And I appreciate the fact that there is a process for, for containment. If, if things don't go right, then they're supposed to have to try to fix them. However, I think it would be really useful to look at comparables and see what, what we really talking about. The other element I want to bring up is that Milpitas, for example, where they also have biotech labs, they are not, several cities, they are not accepting emergency generators that are either diesel generators or that are bloom boxes that are natural gas powered because the greenhouse gases. They are really trying to meet their targets. And I understand that they are doing a sort of a, I don't know, you know, process by which they're buying credits instead. I think a lot of thought has gone into this project, which I appreciate, but I do believe that if other cities can do electrification for the buildings, H V A C, and for their generators, emergency generators, I think Menlo Park could consider that as well. The loading and unloading deliveries is another item that has apparently been a real issue for biotech labs, which tend to run sometimes all night long. So lights at night is an issue. And having automatic screens that come down and shut, you know, screen from in the, for the lighting for the neighborhoods. The biosafety levels are the, are the greatest concern in this area of liquefaction and high earthquake damage. The possibility of biosafety level three labs in this area with so much residential around it close to the bay is, is something that is of very real concern. There are a lot of articles, even I think maybe today there was a Washington Post article about it too. So there is a lot of national concern about privately funded biosafety labs. And unfortunately, in these tenants, we don't know who the tenants are. And but you can in your memorandum of understanding or something like that, you could define that it should be restricted to biosafety levels one and two. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. At this time, I don't see any other hands raised. I know that Naomi Goodman appears to be online, but does not have their hand raised. I'm happy to wait a moment to see if that person would like to speak or we could close public comment.
Let's just wait a second to see if anybody else. We do have a number of, of folks on the line. So if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, I think we've given enough time now. There are no additional hands?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, let's close public comment. We'll bring it back to the dais here. And if there are commissioners that would like to speak on different topics, please let me know. Who would like to start?
If, yeah. Commissioners, to kind of prime the pump here, we've listed a series of topics that the commission may want to may want to consider or discuss in terms of this, in addition to the things that they've heard from members of the public tonight. So this is just designed to provide a starting place. And at that, staff will be taking notes and we look forward to your comments. And we can always pull up the plan set as well as need be.
No, this is the project. Okay, Commissioner Tate.
I have a couple of questions. Excuse me. One is, I, I guess I need a little bit of clarity on the, and it may have been in the other section, but it was the diagram that had the public space that you could walk through to connect this project with Willow Village. And I just wanted to be clear and understand who is that for? Because it is a little far out for Bell Haven residents. So my assumption is that is actually for East Palo Alto, for the neighborhood that's right there off of Kavanaugh and not for Bell Haven residents with connectivity, which I think was outlined when, when that slide was being shown. So just can I have some clarity on that, please?
I think the commissioner is correct. It will get more use from the other, from people in the businesses as well as from the East Palo Alto area. And given the location of the project, access from the Bell Haven neighborhood is really more inclined to, to access the S F P U C right away from the, from where it connects closer to Willow Road. The original thought was that may a future connection to one of future trail network and under the S F P U C right of way seemed like from, from a staff perspective, that would make sense. It would also facilitate connection between the different parking areas in the building. But you are, but you are correct. It will probably has a potential for more benefit to a lot of the, the residences in, in East Palo Alto that are located near the project.
Right, the residences and the businesses, as you pointed out.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of the commenters said something about gas heating. And, and it would be great to get some kind of clarification on that and whether or not other than gas is being considered for the heating.
The, the applicant is proposing to use natural gas in, to power the, the heating and the other H V A C activities. The city's reach code has a mechanism to submit a justification to that. The city also requires a peer review of that document. That document has been prepared. It's been preliminarily reviewed. But the way the city's reach code, the final decision on that will actually be made at the building permit stage. Now, the E I R does assume the the use of natural gas, which is the reason that there is a significant and unavoidable impact for that. But that's what the applicant is proposing. That's the project in front of the commission.
Right. So we understand, because this has been in front of us before, that, that Life Sciences does require a gas in a portion of, of, is that the generator? What, what is it? What is it specifically where natural gas is the most efficient and the only, only option at this point for Life Sciences? I've forgotten which area that is. The lab space. So
Yes, ma'am.
So that's not heating throughout the building. So I, I guess I'm trying to really understand why we aren't trying, in this project, trying to move towards, towards doing this. And especially, you know, of course, I haven't vetted this, but the, the commenter stated that in other jurisdictions, the requirement is to do other than natural gas for the heating portion of life science or biotech. So I'm just curious as to why that is not a consideration at all.
This might be best answered by the applicant, if they, I think, could explain far better than I can.
That technology progress with regards to electric heating for laboratories, we're not there yet. We have some of the brightest minds in the industry working on it, but heating laboratories with electric is not feasible at this time.
Can I just, I've spoken with another project, four oh five five Bohannon, that's also biology lab space, is my understanding. And they are planning to be a hundred percent minus the diesel generator. There's plenty to be a hundred percent electric. So I'm wondering, you know, at least if for the lab spaces, you need the gas, but what about the HVAC system? Can, is there, what are some of your options? Because I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned because it seems like we're really moving in this direction and yet you're not.
So when you say we're moving in this direction, the, the building industry in general is moving in that direction. Laboratory spaces have not moved in that direction by and large. The challenge with laboratory spaces and heating them is that the number of air changes for a laboratory space is significantly higher than for an office. And I'm happy to get as nerdy as you'd like, but the physics of heating a laboratory space with electricity right now is not feasible and reliable.
Go ahead. Okay, so I, this brings to me is it's a way to zone like where the offices are or something? I, I, I'm not sure how other jurisdictions do it. And, you know, since we just heard like around the corner from this location that they're planning on not having gas and it is similar use. So yes, the industry is, is starting to move along, but they're moving a little slowly. But maybe there is something that is out there because your neighbor is attempting to do so.
So we are actually doing an all-electric laboratory building across the street at eleven ninety O'Brien Drive. This is a 12,000 square foot facility. And I don't, I can't address the specific project that Chair Harris is referring to. And we're happy to, to look at that. We looked at a lot of different projects. There was a single laboratory building, a user building in Newark that was all electric. That project is not yet completed, not yet fully commissioned because they've been having problems with it. It is our standard practice in part for the benefit of, of our tenants, but also for the city, to build life science buildings that are flexible. So we don't build a building that has an area that's specifically designated for office and specifically designated for lab. Because the buildings that we have built in Menlo Park will the, the ones that we already, that we built many years ago have been around for 40 years. This building will be around for 40 years or more. Tenants move in and out. We take a building that is a single tenant building and we make it multi-tenant. And if we were to designate specific zones for office and specific zones for lab, that would eliminate that flexibility, if that makes sense.
It does. Chair Harris.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, when you say it's going to be here for 40 years, that brings to mind, so we're going to have gas in it for 40 years. So I, I understand that you're wrestling with this and having a hard time. I'm just I'm just, I'm disappointed that we're not there. So let's move on. I know I have some other comments, but I'm sure some others would like to speak. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Chair. Interim Chair, is that the correct?
Honorable. It seems we're not sure.
Before I jumped into the possible study session topics, I wanted to spend a moment getting educated by the applicant, if you would be so kind, as to talk a little bit about bio levels. I don't do anything related to this for a living. I have no idea what a bio level is. Could you talk a little bit about what the bio levels are? What's a three versus a two versus a one? What gets contemplated? How the next Armageddon gets cooked up in terms of what a different bio level might be and what the risks are? And don't go super deep, but enough so that I'm not the dumbest person in the room. I'm just slightly above that.
Through the chair, I will provide a little bit of background before I turn it over to the person most knowledgeable in the room about these issues, which is Ron Kriedemeyer, our Chief Operating Officer, who has run a half dozen life science companies in their operations. We want to conduct ourselves, continue to conduct ourselves in the community of Menlo Park in a way that is transparent, makes everyone comfortable and everyone feel safe, whether it's the community or the occupants of our buildings. And I welcome the conversation. I want to clarify a few things that I think will help put the conversation on a solid footing. There has been a lot of reference to the Life Science District of Menlo Park being in a high liquefaction zone that is categorically false. The Sun Campus, the former Sun Campus that is now occupied by Facebook, is on a liquefaction area. The area that is geographically south of the railroad track, which includes all of the Life Science District, is on solid soil. It is not a liquefaction zone. Life science is a very broad term and covers a lot of different types of uses. And I want to clarify that when we say the Life Science District of Menlo Park, we don't have every building conducting biosafety level research, whether it be one or two or three. Quite a bit of the square footage in the Life Science District is not conducting any biosafety activity. For instance, one of our largest tenants, a company called Pacific Biosciences, they make genomic sequencing equipment. They, they, they're not, this is not a bunch of biosafety activity going on. Another of our tenants, formerly known as Intersect TNT, now owned by Medtronic, they're making a sinus implant. This is not a, they're manufacturing a device. And so within life science, this very large category, you have medical device manufacturing, you have medical instrument manufacturing, you have diagnostics. And so I'm going to take a guess here. Maybe on the high side, 20% of the total area in the Life Science District is conducting biosafety activities of some kind. Most of it is one, a little bit of is two. So just wanted to provide that context before we start getting into what the biosafety levels are and the precautions that are necessary to conduct those.
Through the chair, may I ask a question? What does biosafety mean in layman's terms?
Ron will cover that, too.
Good evening, Vice Chair Harris and Planning Commissioners. My name is Ron Kriedemeyer. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Tarleton Properties. Formerly served as biological safety officer for several life science companies, several of them here in Menlo Park. I served as a chemical hygiene officer and environmental health and safety officer for several of those companies as well. So I'm, my, I might be a little rusty. I've been working for John for a long time. So I'm happy to go through, you know, sort of the fundamentals with you. If you guys want to dig deep, then I'd probably have to brush up or bring someone in. But essentially, the biosafety level program is designed in a sort of escalating system, starting with BSL1. BSL1 is typically biological materials that will not cause harm to humans. Biosafety Level 2 is typically materials that, such as human blood, synovial fluid, things like that, that are potentially infectious. Biosafety Level 3 is potentially lethal bioagents. These, these different biosafety levels have also increasing controls that come with them as you move up from one to three. There are biosafety Level 4 labs in this country. There are none in California. To my knowledge, in the last 20 years that I've been working in the life science world in California, there have not been any biosafety Level 4 labs in California. There are only 15 in the country. The closest one, I believe, is in Colorado or Montana. And most of the BSL4 labs are run by the government. There are quite a few BSL3 labs around. They're at Stanford, UCSF. Most major universities have BSL3 labs. BSL3 labs are typically pretty small labs. Well, let's start from the beginning. Biosafety Level 1 labs, again, non-hazardous materials to people. Standard biological practices apply to those laboratories. They clean their benches typically with a 5% solution of alcohol to kill anything. Biosafety Level 2, there are mechanical controls and increased procedures. So there will be biosafety protocols for the people who work in those laboratories. Additionally, there will be training for those people. The biosafety training and all of the associated procedures are outlined in California Code Regulations Title 8. And there will be an exposure control program required for BSL2 and BSL3. That program will have things such as a blood-borne pathogen training program associated with it. It will have Sharpe's Injury Program associated with it. It will have entry and exit requirements for the laboratory so that only trained people are allowed to enter the laboratory areas unescorted. And there will be locks on the doors in a BSL2 lab. You need to have a key to get in. Idea being that if you are trained, you will get a key. If you are not trained, you will not have access. And biosafety Level 3, also biosafety Level 2, there are other mechanical processes involved. So all work in BSL2 labs is done in biosafety cabinets, which are laminar flow cabinets that should material become aerosolized. The expectation in a BSL2 lab is that it will not, but it can happen when pipetting and doing other things. Again, there are procedures in the California Code Regulations on how you can pipet in BSL2 and above labs. All that stuff is spelled out very clearly. All the airflow requirements are spelled out very clearly in the California Code Regulations for the biosafety cabinets and for the actual laboratories themselves. Access is controlled, as I said. When you go up to Biosafety Level 3, you're required to have two interlocking doors. You have to go through two doors to get into a BSL3 lab. Those doors have to be off of any common hallways in their own segregated area of the building. The, all work again is to be done in biosafety cabinets. There's Mc, yes, sir?
Can I just put a pin and ask a question for a moment?
Certainly.
So in the context of what we're contemplating in Menlo Park as it relates to this building, is this one, is this two? And from a practical perspective, how should we be thinking about, how, from an industry perspective, should we be thinking about this?
So as David Hogan mentioned, it's hard to say if it's one, two, three, what is going to be. The nature of the research and the agents that are being used in the laboratory determine what level of biosafety the laboratory is going to be where the research is being done. We do have BSL2 labs in the park right now. We do not have any BSL3 labs in the park right now. We have not had an active BSL3 lab in the park in my tenure. So they're out there. They're, as I said, they're, they're pretty common in the life science world. But they haven't been common in our area. Just not to say that we wouldn't see one someday. It's really a question of what the agents are that are being used in the laboratory. And that defines, based on what the material is, what level of biosafety the laboratory would be. Most, so there are, as I mentioned, a lot of regulations around it. And so the Caloocia has regulations around it. And DIOSH, the Industrial Occupational Safety Department for the state of California, most of those programs are regulated through, or implemented through the, one of the COOPAs. In Menlo Park, the Fire Department is the Hazardous Material COOPA, the Certified Unified Program Agent. For biological, it's San Mateo County, Department of Environmental Health. And so they are the COOPA. They manage, they are the ones who come in and inspect. Take a look at your, your safety programs. Take a look at your training logs. Take a look at, there's a Sharpe's Injury Log that's required to be kept in case anybody gets a needle stick or is cut by a pipet. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to make sure. Did you get enough information or did you want him to finish?
At the risk of being rude to the gentleman at the podium, thank you for this. And the closing piece of my question would be, is there anything being contemplated for Menlo Park that would be different from any other jurisdiction? For instance, up in, like in similar bio parks on the peninsula?
No, sir. There is nothing being contemplated in this jurisdiction that's any different than any other jurisdiction at this point. I would like to point out that there's been a lot of questions about the regulatory aspects of it. It is a well-regulated industry despite what people say. When you get into the BSL3 area, there is a program that's called the Select Agent Program that, that program is regulated by the CDC. Not just anybody can go get one of those agents. And on that list are things like SARS-related coronaviruses and certain other influenza viruses, things like that. Not just anybody can get them. You have to fill out a fair bit of paperwork, send it to the CDC, who sends it to the laboratory that you're trying to get the material from. You have to typically have a couple of PhDs who are qualified and experienced to sign off on even getting that stuff. You can't run to 7-Eleven and buy the stuff. It's, and so people are, you know, the labs aren't regulated. Well, the labs are regulated by, you know, Caloocia, DIOSH, the COOPA, other agencies and an array of other agencies from the, from the chemical perspective. But the CDC does manage the agents that go into the labs. And so you can't just get those. You need to show that you have a need and that you have people who are qualified to use them. And all of that is actually managed by the, I might butcher the name a little bit. It's the Scientific Advisory Board on Bioterrorism to make sure that it's not being used incorrectly, i.e. you're not trying to make a bioweapon with it. And so typically, there's some level of background check down on people who are getting those materials. They're not just handed out. And so while there's not an army of people regulating the lab, like a BSL3 lab in particular, beyond the level of a BSL2 lab, the agents, the biological agents that go in there are regulated. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for that in-depth explanation. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not meaning to cut you off. I just want to make sure that we get to everything and before our 11 o'clock bewitching hour. So who else has a comment about this or another, another type, another, something else within the project? If not, I can talk. Okay. I had a couple of questions on a couple other things. But before I do, what would be the mechanism? This is to staff, if we decided that we did not want to allow anything higher than a Level 1 or Level 2 for this project or any other project?
I mean, I assume that could be made a condition of approval when the project comes for final entitlements.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I want to move on to a couple other items. Transportation. And I want to appreciate both the analysis that was done by Hexagon as well as the analysis that Tarleton undertook with their independent traffic analysis. I have a couple of questions. There were several recommendations that were made, that were proposed by Hexagon, and this may be a question for staff. For instance, one of the suggestions was that current on-street parking should be removed for 20 feet on either sides of driveways and landscape plan should be modified to ensure that existing, exiting vehicles can see pedestrians on the sidewalks, and I would add also bicyclists, and that the project install a sidewalk along its frontage on Casey Court to provide better pedestrian connection between the project site and the surrounding area. So I guess it's, one question is, is this something that the applicant is planning to do? Either of these. But my broader question is to staff, how is it determined which of these recommendations that Hexagon or whoever is our transportation analyst, how is it determined which of these recommendations the city will require or can the city require any of them?
At this point, the mitigation measures, the requirements, well, there's two things. The mitigation measures related to VMT are in the EIR. The other improvement requirements, the project is proposing frontage improvements along O'Brien and Casey Court, which is pretty typical in terms of new development in an area where there's a new standard. The assumption is over time, you'll get all, that network of improvements will become more comprehensive. In terms of the recommended improvements by the traffic study, at this time, I would assume that the Public Works Department would include those in their list of mitigation measures in the, in the conditions of approval that would be presented to the commission. If, and I know if you have specific technical questions, we have a member of Hexagon here who will be able to provide a much more intelligent answer than I could possibly provide. But I think the way to approach it would be to, if you have questions on specific, you know, mitigation measures, that would be a good thing to ask us because then we can make sure that the Public Works Department is available to provide specific information when this project does come back to the commission.
Okay, so then the couple that I just, that I just referenced, I would like to add those as you're, as you're moving forward with this project. So it was the, that the current on-street parking be removed for 20 feet on either side of driveways and landscape plan should be modified to ensure the existing, exiting vehicles can see pedestrians and bicyclists. And that the project install a sidewalk along frontage on Casey Court to provide- the project install a sidewalk along frontage on Casey Court to provide better pedestrian connection.
Okay. The project plans do include sidewalks along the Casey Court.
Oh, they're on Casey Court, too? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, they're in both places.
I didn't, I didn't see that. Okay.
They just, they are there.
Okay. All right. And the bike lane, can you describe the bike lane around the project? Is the, does the planned bicycle lanes along O'Brien Drive, which would connect to Willow Road, would they also be connecting around a Casey with the drop-offs and pickups from the school there or other businesses?
That I don't have an answer for. The, I'm not sure exactly where between the Adams Court project and this project and the other projects, exactly where the Class 2 bike lane is supposed to be constructed. Maybe one of the applicant's representatives has a more knowledgeable answer. I'm afraid I don't have an answer that I can vouch for, so I apologize for that.
Okay. Do you have an answer?
Yes. So there's a number of things to consider here. There's actually a separate project that is in the works between Tarleton Properties and the City of Menlo Park, public-private partnership to install a continuous sidewalk from Willow to University on the south side of O'Brien Drive, as well as a bike lane. That, the current construct of that project, which is obviously separate from this one, and also separate from the 1350 Adams Court project that you've already approved, there's a compromise in that project with existing neighbors to allow for street parking to still happen on one side of the road, which would allow for there to be a sidewalk and a bike lane on the south side, but parking on the north side. We had originally proposed bike lanes both ways, both sides, but there are a few neighbors who feel that the street parking is necessary for their continued operation. As it relates to the drop-off, it's our understanding that the drop-off and pickup for the daycare is actually off of O'Brien Drive and not Casey Court.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I had a question about construction noise. There are a lot of, I read through a lot, a list of mitigation measures around noise for construction, and I'm wondering, from staff, how is this monitored? Recently, we've had a number of complaints from neighbors of other projects that the measures that were created were then not adhered to, and that they couldn't get anyone from the city to go out and monitor. So I'm just wondering, I'm just concerned that we don't have adequate staff for this type of monitoring. And I'm wondering, what is the protocol for monitoring during the construction process, especially because there's a school virtually next door, and I imagine it's difficult with that, with an excess of construction noise. Do you have an answer for that, Mr. Hogan?
Yes. The noise impacts from construction on the school was something that we spent a lot of time working on. Eventually, we've come up with the idea of a noise barrier along the property line that will hopefully reduce noise levels within the school playground. Unfortunately, we didn't feel that we, that the mitigation measure, even though we think it will be effective, may not be able to achieve the reduction in noise to get it to an insignificant level. So the EIR does include the construction, the design and construction of, in effect, a sound barrier around the playground area for the school. That's not an option. That's part of the, that's part of the requirement. Now, in terms of...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Now, in terms of monitoring that, that is something that I don't actually have an answer for right now. We, I think a lot of it will depend on the actual design of the wall and the calculations that are done with that. Noise measurements are complicated because there's so many different ways to present it and so many different ways to evaluate it. You know, CNEL, which is the day nighttime, doesn't really make much sense, because in the evening, there's nothing going on at the school. Spot measurements always have a challenge, just because you can never really be sure, is it the construction, did a truck drive by on O'Brien at the same time there was a greater? I know that on the Facebook project, when they were doing construction there, we did have them actually set up a noise meter at, on the edge of the project to measure noises, actual noise measurements, to see how much noise was actually leaving the site. Something like that could be possible. But I think this is, if the commission would like us to come up with some other additional information, this is something that staff will take a look at before the project comes back to you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just to add to that, for construction, that would be the building inspectors enforcing that, and certainly members of the public can call code enforcement if there's an issue. And if commissioners, I'm not, I'm not sure which projects had issues recently, but certainly if commissioners receive concerns, please forward those to staff, and then we can, we can look into those.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last thing is about the café. I would like to see more information in detail about that café. I've heard, we've heard from many residents, as well as from early discussions on this project from this body, before my time, but I went back and reviewed the video from the 2021 meeting that you all had in front of this body, that the community, that this café really is a community service, as well as for office workers, and that there is really a need for a local café that operates outside of business hours, evenings and weekends, and morning lattes, where new and current residents can gather, with opportunities for local community events as music or art. And then there was also been another suggestion of maybe something that they, that the community might want would be additional food versus to takeaway versus just a café. So I know that the, from this, from this body, last time, it was recommended that you all go into the community and just kind of see what, what can you do to help the community, given that you have this café. So I want to ensure that that reach out to the community is happening, and how we might facilitate that from a city perspective.
I hear what you're saying. And I can certainly understand the need for additional services. As I understand it, that's maybe more commercial use than the applicant was envisioning on this site. I will touch base with the management in the department and with the applicant, and will provide some information to the commission on this. I don't really have a, I don't really have a good answer. I think, given the design of the building, the small kind of, what I might call a café that really focuses more on the tenants and employees in the surrounding buildings, I think that's very different from a larger commercial use with a broader, menu's not quite the right word, but with a broader business plan, I think is, was not something that the applicant was proposing for this project, even though I can see that that community would certainly benefit from it. You know, with the Willow Village project and all the development going on there, that would probably be a more appropriate location for something like this.
And through the, through the chair, I think maybe the applicant can answer, provide a little more background also. But I did want to clarify, the café is not the community amenity. They're proposing to pay the in-lu fee.
Okay. Okay. Does it, who else has a comment? That's it for right now. Who else has a comment or would like to speak? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. Couple of questions to the applicant. First, could the applicant elaborate on the lack of an access point between the two parcels, and what's the thinking behind that? Specifically, the surface parking areas?
Thank you for the question. Just to clarify, are you asking why the two parking areas are separated?
Correct.
Okay. Well, one of the reasons why they're separated is because we have a meandering, publicly accessible path with seating and landscaping that travels between the two. We, we feel like operationally, it will work fine to have a parking area that's primarily designated for employees and a parking area that will be available for visitors and others. And we're comfortable, from a design perspective and an operational standpoint, that having those two separated will work for us. Does that answer your question?
Sure. And which would be which? The smaller one to the, I'll call it, south, would be for guests?
Correct. Correct.
And the bigger one would be for?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. And then the move away from the structured parking to the surface parking that took place in intervening meetings, the benefit, I'm going to relitigate that just for a moment, in terms of the Talton Properties thinking about that. My, John's view of that is that structured parking is expensive, and the previous conversations we had about that was build one structured parking, have multiple buildings potentially use it, so you get higher utilization of it, you don't have oceans of asphalt. But then when it came back, it was, it's, surface is less expensive, and, so wait, I'll just stop there, and I won't lead to witness anymore. Your belief is what, as it relates to parking, and could you just re-express why it is that the surface is better than the structured for this project and for you?
Sure. We have to go back even further than a couple of years ago. When we first brought the project to the Planning Commission, this is four years ago or so, there was fairly strong opposition to a structured parking solution that was parallel to the face of the building, which was our option at that time. We went away and tried to address that strong opposition. There has also been a fairly universal pushback on parking in general, and this solution has a reduced parking ratio. That's not to say that there wouldn't be some point in the future where structured parking was appropriate for this total site. But today, the appropriate solution that addresses the prior pushback from the commission about, as well as staff, frankly, about the parking structure that was previously proposed in that south parking lot, was to acquire the land. Now, yes, acquiring the land does allow us for this proposed project to surface park as opposed to structured parking, but the land wasn't free. And all of the accoutrement that we are proposing for this project of landscaping and the material that we're going to use for the parking lots that will reflect solar, so that we don't have the heat island effect, et cetera, it's not a huge cost savings for us to go in this direction than, than to go in the structured parking direction.
And writ large for Tarleton Properties and the other properties you have done there as well, it's also, the surface parking also suits the needs of what else you're doing there for your other property should be overflowing in the future, or is that not a consideration?
Well, we have another project that you have seen for the, only once, at 1005 O'Brien that has a, has mostly structured parking solutions. So there will be a mix of structured parking and surface parking. Over time, it will be mostly structured parking, but there will be some interim periods where we will have surface parking, whether it's because a particular site will be developed in phases, or because when we are doing a larger master plan, that we pull a building down, or two buildings down, and replace one of the buildings with a larger structure, surface park during that period of time, and then when the second building goes up, and it's a, it's going to be an ebb and flow.
And one of the benefits of having an operator like yourself in the area is the ability to move things around and get efficiencies of parking, certainly from a planning commission perspective, that's helpful. Okay. So with that in mind, I'll go through a number of the points that we're asked to opine on at this meeting. One is site layout. Site layout for me, we've seen this before, this building, it is, it is, I have no comments on that. It is fine. Architectural design and detailing of the building, I think the, obviously, the front works quite well. I am not exercised over the lack of detailing on the other areas. Some of my other colleagues may be, that's not an issue for me. Publicly accessible open space, I think, is well done. And in the amounts that you have, I think it's creatively utilized. On-site parking layout, we just heard about that. The community amenity in lieu payment of 315, and then at 100, and what, 30%, it's in excess of that. What do I hate in lieu payments? Could you, could you make my day and tell me what else you could do with that $3.1 million that would be accretive to the community, that wouldn't be a wheelbarrow full of money, that you could do better than we could at the city?
Well, going back in time, we had proposed a library that was done by someone else. We had proposed an aquatic center that was deemed to be a city responsibility and not an appropriate use of public benefit dollars. We could build sidewalks, we could underground utilities, we could do all kinds of wonderful things. The starting point is an agreement between the Planning Commission and City Council that is enacted into law that provides a list of projects that are EIR-ready. Doesn't do us any good for you guys to approve a list of projects that we then have to go get a separate EIR for. Another thing that we would love to do is improvements at Bayfront Bedwell Park, and we thought that that was going to be our magic bullet, only to discover that there is a list of things that, to be done at Bayfront Bedwell Park, but there's no EIR to back it up. So if we were to suggest that the $3 million would go to improvements at Bayfront Bedwell, we would be, our project would be at risk because there's no EIR for that separate piece. So please, 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 I would be happy to devote my personal time, our staff time, consultant time, we will help. Let's get a list that is approved and is EIR-ready, so that we can do actual projects. It pains me. and is EIR ready so that we can do actual projects. It pains me. Can you can you hear the pain in my voice? To write checks to the city that sits and does nothing for the community, the fundamental basis of the whole Life Science District and the and the community benefit fee was that we were going to build projects for the community.
Right. It's a Groundhog Day. We've had this conversation over and over again. Which is punts it back here. So I guess I gotta start showing up at city council meeting again. Okay, so I I thank you for articulating your position on that. That's clear, understood and helpful. Those are my comments. I thank you. This is a third go around on this project. I think it is well done. I think it suits the community. I think that's what we did with Connect Menlo and it's a Life Sciences building in a Life Sciences district. So check those boxes. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't I didn't want to go another moment before I did actually praise you for switching to the surface level parking. I wasn't here back in whatever it was, 2018, but I I am happy that it is surface parking. I also applaud you for reducing the parking. And now I see that you've added more trees and the solar, so that all makes me pretty happy. So I just wanted to say that I do it is noticed and I did appreciate that. And on the community amenities, my understanding is that there were a couple of city council members working on that. And I thought by now it would be finished. And so you know what? I haven't bugged them lately about it. So I will and maybe their list, maybe some of them are listening. So I will go. I will definitely go back and work on that because I agree with Commissioner Barnes that it's very frustrating because we know you guys can build things and we'd like you to build things. Yes.
Opportunity at the risk of offending my boss, who should have thought of this. The wheelbarrow full of money could be used for the EIRs to enable all of those other projects. And I think that would be a great use of it because then us and other developers would be able to readily select from projects that are ready to go rather than than having to put their put their projects at risk or, you know, because of some really long EIR that's going to have to be done. Those EIRs could get done with this with this money or with other project community benefit money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that idea, for that bold idea. Did anybody else want to speak or do do you feel staff that you have? And oh, sorry, Commissioner Tate.
The only other thing I have because a couple of the other items on my list were already asked us questions is what about the noise pollution, noise, the light at night in the neighborhood? What are you doing to mitigate the light pollution? On the Kavanaugh, what is that neighborhood called? Flood Estate Neighborhood? And actually, probably the Al Bernie neighborhood also, right? Because you'll be a five-story building?
Generally, I think, yeah, yes, Elka would be the perfect one to respond.
So the the site lighting here is all down lighting. It's actually mitigated to the perimeter of the site. So the there has actually been a study done by the lighting engineer to show light levels at the property so we have sufficient so it's safe, but so there's no light pollution to the neighborhood.
Fantastic. Thank you. Oh, and then I do have one other thing that's it might not be your your question, but I'm just curious that another prop, oh, actually, maybe it is. Another property has a cafe that's open to the public like what you're proposing here. And I'm just curious to know who really uses utilizes it. Is it primarily employees at the other buildings around you? Because, you know, the East Palo Alto residents that wrote in, you know, they're they're gung ho and wanting to use whatever news coming up, you know, online, but you already have something, so.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We have been operating a eatery in the park continuously for 40 years. Our original eatery in the park was called Potbelly Deli. And then we had Jesse Cool ran Cool Eats for for a number of years until she got out of that business. And now we have Eats at 1440. Our our current eatery Eats at 1440 has been the most successful in in 40 years in attracting outside users and is quite popular. As to this additional eating facility, it would not be nearly as large or as large a menu as Eats at 1440. Eats at 1440 has a pizza oven and a large commercial kitchen, et cetera. This would be more in the form of you know, grab and go. Simply because there is only so much food service that is going to be viable in that location. And we will have more options for for food as the park grows into the vision that was established when the Life Science District was was put in place. But we're trying to measure the increased food service to meet the actual need. For instance, Eats at 1440 when we first opened was open for breakfast and coffee service. We had such limited use that we couldn't justify continuing it. But we will continue to to try to expand not only the menu, the locations, the hours as the park evolves.
Okay, very good. So Eat 1440. Are they just, you know, during business hours? Or do their hours extend into the evening?
No, the the Eats at 1440 is during business hours.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I I've noticed the average building height calculation was one of the items and I just wanted to clarify. The linkage between 1140 is in order to get the average height down so that or to transfer so that you can get the average to where it needs to be. But it seems that that side of the street is only allowed to be 35 feet since it butts up against homes. So two things. One is I know Tarleton, you've been interested in acquiring the nearby properties to 1140. Would all of those properties be then limited to 35 feet? Or I don't know if this is a question to staff or to you all. At the 2021 meeting for this project, staff mentioned that they needed to go back and calculate what the height of 1140 would be and that it actually might be lower than 35 feet. I'm not sure if that calculation happened. So I guess question to staff and or to you, Mr. Tarleton.
So 1140 is currently lower than 35 feet.
Okay.
And if I may address your prior comment or question about average height between the north side of the street and south side of the street. That was specifically envisioned in the establishment of the Life Science District. We had many conversations. Mr. Riggs happened to have been part of that process. We had many conversations. It was Councilmember Otaki who was specifically concerned about having a variance in building height in the neighborhood. And so it, as I say, it was specifically contemplated the idea of pairing lower buildings on the south side of the street with taller buildings on the north side of the street.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's all I have. I just want to ensure that we have enough, you have enough from a staff perspective, Mr. Hogan, from our discussion for what you what you need to to how you need to move forward.
Yes, if the commission is the commission, I think, has shared their thoughts on the project and the additional questions that they have. At this point, I think that we're in pretty good shape. I would ask Karina to step in or Victoria as well, if she's still there, to see if there's anything else that's needed. But from my perspective, I think we're good.
Yeah, through the chair, I believe we as staff have have what we need. I believe ICF left after the EIR portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, another comment from Commissioner Tate.
And this is actually a question for staff. I can't remember exactly which project it was, but it was here recently. We had one and Chair Harris asked the question about the lots merging. Well, actually, it was on O'Brien also. And then this is actually laid out here in the report about the lot merging, so why what? Why is that? Because it says it says in our report, proposed project would require the following actions and lot merger is is highlighted. And previously, it was a non-issue. It wasn't prominent.
Lot mergers are most commonly required because either the lot pattern doesn't make sense or the buildings would have to cross the property line and the building code doesn't like buildings crossing the property line. So that's the main reason that most of the lots, the two development lots are being merged. And for for clarity, there the applicant is proposing to include the drainage ditch lot as well. So the main reason is is just so that the project can be built.
Yes, so I understand that. My question is.
Hold on one second. Okay, it's 11 o'clock. So I would like to make a motion that we extend for five minutes just to finish this and then to do the informational items. Is that, can I have a motion for that?
I I motion your motion.
Would somebody like to second it? Second. Okay, Commissioner Barnes? Or we're sorry, we're voting.
Yes, thank you. I I was so enamored with my own motion. Why wouldn't everyone else want to do that? Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Okay, and and I vote affirmative as well. So go ahead, Commissioner Tate.
I just wasn't sure. It wasn't really clear to me whether or not it's really called out so prominently here and with a number attached to it, number four, because it's something that could potentially fall into our purview to say no. When we had a project several weeks ago and the question was asked about that is how are lot mergers just able to happen like this? And so that's that was my question. Because I just wanted some clarity on whether or not this was something that we could say no about.
I would let Karina or Kyle answer the city's policy on that. In most cases, lot mergers are pretty pretty standard. The primary planning issue is, you know, are you dividing a lot between two different zoning districts? No, generally merging two lots together is is not a a major design issue. It just happens to be a required component of this project. That's the reason we've mentioned it.
Okay, thank you. I can go with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I would close item G1 and we'll move on to informational items. I'm sorry, H informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have anything to add besides the fact that the regular meetings are happening on the 24th of April and the 1st of May?
Yeah, I can provide some updates. So for April 24th, we have one project, 1143 Woodland. That's for an ADU in the front setback. We have 1162 Al Camino Real, the amended below market rate housing agreement. Now, we have 4055 Bohannon Drive, use permit and architectural control. And then the next meeting, May 1st, that's just one week later, but we're still finalizing what will be on that agenda.
Okay, does anybody have any question? Does anyone have any questions of staff?
I do. I was just wondering whether or not it was possible for us to get an update on projects that we've heard in the past. I guess we could say six months or better. Just kind of interested in status and I think I heard somewhere kind of that a project started falling apart, but it's hearsay, so it'd be great to just get an update. And this is over in the Bayfront area. So just kind of curious because, you know, we take a long time as we deliberate and then we never know what happens often.
Yeah, we can certainly provide updates, probably just for the larger projects would make sense. Maybe when a, you know, building permit is issued or finalized or.
Well, even even if how we presented our motion and approved a project, if if that is no longer the issue, you know, moving forward, like an amenity is no longer going to be the amenity that's that's in the project, those type of things. We I think we would appreciate knowing that and especially since it has taken us such a long time to work through this amenity uncertainty, I'll call it that.
All right. Yes, certainly we can provide updates.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 11:05 as promised.